Alrighty, it's nine oh six AM. We will begin this.
Do you want to mute us?
We're muted.
Oh, sorry.
A work session on Lake County Board of County Commissioners. First on the agenda today, we will have calendar review led by Sandra Pettis, Administrative Assistant. Thank you, Sandra.
Monday, the fifteenth. Commissioner Tharp has office hours from eleven thirty to three. Tuesday, the sixteenth, we have our regular meeting from eleven to two. Commissioner Tharp will be in her office from two to four thirty. And City Council has their regular meeting from six to eight. To just confirm with this, it's Evergreen, so Conservation District monthly meeting should be from six to eight as well. And I did notice she hadn't sent out an invite on Ken Wonder, so I'll double check on that. She got a new email. Oh, you're right. It's maybe. Yeah. I'm not kidding. That could be. I'll double check on that. Uh, September seventeenth, Community Coffee from eight thirty to ten. Um, we will have your first County Board of Equalization hearing.
Is that an official one or is that a practice run?
This is, will be an official one. Yeah. Yep, um, and that will be from nine to twelve. I'm not sure it will be the entire thing, because we will have a couple of people sign up for each day, so we're gonna make sure we have enough time, but. Um, Animal Shelter Advisory Board Meeting from one to two thirty. And Commissioner Tharp has office hours from one to three. And the La Vella County Regional Housing Authority will have their regular board meeting from five thirty to seven thirty. Eighteenth, you have another County Board of Equalization hearing scheduled for one to four. Friday, the nineteenth, Friday, uh, sorry.
Sandra, for the eighteenth, can we get the word out with staff that I'll be in that and a check signing will need to be early?
Sure.
It's an off week, so it shouldn't be a heavy workload, but since I don't know how those meetings run, I don't wanna say that I can just have them coming in and handing me checks and stuff while I'm at that meeting.
And you wanna do it early or late?
Um, earlier probably looks like the smarter option.
Okay, I'll take a look and see if we can change them.
Okay, thank you.
Of course. Friday, the nineteenth, Twin Lakes Community Coffee from nine to ten. And Fire Management Board Meeting from nine to eleven.
If I may, I might need to reschedule that because I'm in training for next week, but I'll, I'll give them, I'll give them.
Okay.
Alright. Where is it for next week? Any other questions?
Not for me. Thank you, Sandra.
No, thank you.
Alright, uh, moving on. Agenda item number two. We have a five-year loss analysis report presented by County Technical Services Incorporated, CTSI, led by Dana Foley, CTSI Senior Loss Control Representative. Thank you, Dana, good to see you again.
Thank you. By chance, do you have the ability to pull up the reports then?
Yes.
Just so we can see them on the.
Um, did I get those? I don't know how those are. Let me.
Is it possible to run off?
Yeah.
Couple of copies?
Yeah, sure.
For everybody in OE.
Do you want me to do that, Sandra? Yeah. Copies of both of these?
Yep.
Oh, you got that? Okay.
Awesome. Little backup plan there.
Yeah, nice. Well prepared. They weren't blasting on the highway when we came up?
No, no. They were, you could see all the trucks getting ready to, they were all staging up there and whatnot. And then, uh, yeah, I made it up, I swear.
Wonder what the budget is on that?
What, Floyd Hill?
I think I did.
Isn't it a couple billion?
I think it's ten billion.
Sandra, I found it.
Oh, you did?
That's crazy.
Uh, yeah, if you wanna send it to the UOCC.
It's the bottom turn.
Kermit's Corner.
Oh, that's good, thank you.
Right when I was here was when Kermit's went from being a biker bar to trying to like clean themselves up a little bit.
I didn't ask about putting anyone in a position because normally a job does that.
It's like the nostalgic hole-in-all ride, dude. Growing up there.
Yeah.
Cause normally.
I used to have to go that way because my Volkswagen van didn't like the hills.
Yeah.
So I had to go from Golden to Kermit's instead of going up, you know, the other way on Seventy. And it was the only way I could get to Berthold Bass Ski Area. Back when that was still a thing.
Without it overheating on you?
It'd overheat a little bit, we'd just turn the music up and hope we didn't see too much steam coming out of the back of the van.
Take us full two minutes to safely.
Safe scan.
Takes forever.
We'll be safe.
Yeah. Two minutes is optimistic, isn't it?
At least, at least you'll get a copy with my chicken scratch on it.
Nice. We'll get it figured out. We'll have a decoder ring for your chicken scratch. That's an help.
Better be, uh, feel looking.
Sorry, I wasn't right.
Normally HR handles it, but Liz and Ashley had to kinda tag team.
No, that's fine, I understand, we're totally, uh, in a, um, transitional phase in HR. No further updates. Okay, thank you, staff.
I might be one of those five minute or something.
I think there's three of them.
There's three of them. Okay, that's why. I say sometimes it's like a full minute and sometimes it's like, I'll go do stuff, I'll go back and I'm like, really?
Yeah, my third option would be I'll fire my computer up and take over.
It'll.
I feel like the timing of printing and the timing of it loading just.
Yeah.
There's too much work out.
Right. Cause I really don't.
Yeah, last year when I was up here, it was a back room. I was, it was like get in and move out just to.
Go right.
Do the shuffle.
Depends on the agenda. I think more folks are getting savvy with the Zoom stuff, so if they really wanna show up, I think we've pushed awareness of that a whole bunch. And also we record and post on YouTube all our work sessions now, so I think there's some contingent of people who are like, I'll just watch it later.
Where they can do it at times two speed?
Yeah, yeah. Pause, rewind.
It's very strange seeing yourself on YouTube.
Or hearing yourself.
It is.
It's like, that's how I say it.
Do I sound like that?
It's doable.
Hate it.
You poor people that have to listen to me.
You're your own worst critic. It's not as bad for everyone else as you think it is.
Yeah.
Ten billion, really, is that what the price is?
I think so, isn't that, I said anything, a ten billion to a ten-year project? Kermit's Corner?
Yeah.
It's ten billion, yeah.
That's, that's pricey.
A lot of, a lot of it was, uh, the Biden's bill, you know, the infrastructure bill? Seems a little excessive, like.
You're winning.
I'm winning.
You're winning.
We found it, but it's still.
It's still in study.
Yeah.
Still scanning, so I only made three copies, just.
You have a luck on printer ink?
Thank you.
I haven't got my card yet. You may beat me to that.
What's that?
You may beat me to that.
To what?
Getting a card?
We'll, uh, we'll talk about that.
Your box.
Alright.
We'll talk about supplies too.
So. If you're ready.
Mm-hmm.
Procedure, I'm Dana Foley with CTSI. I'm your, uh, Senior Loss Control Specialist assigned to the county. I've been with the county since being with, uh, CTSI almost three years ago, so. That being said, just to reiterate what CTSI is, we are a pool made up of county members from around the state. So that's all CTSI does is counties and county insurance. We have the CWCP pool, which is the work comp pool. And then we have the CAP pool, which does all of the property, general liability, auto, so the rest of the insurance. And then we also have a health pool as well. But today I'll talk about the two pools and just to, because you're members of both. And not only are you members of both, but as a result of being members, you're also owners of CTSI as well. So the counties actually, each pool has county commissioners from around the state of various size counties as the board members as well, as CTSI as a whole. So it's county-owned, county-operated, it doesn't get more local than that. So that being said, uh, the way CTSI works is the contributions go in. Towards the end of the year, your contributions go into an account, goes, that sits into an account, claims are paid out of that account. And then the boards set a surplus level. And anything that's left over above that surplus level goes back to the county members in the form of an equity distribution. So it's not like we hang on to the money, it goes back to the members. So I always give the best insurance advice, buy the promise, don't use the product. That keeps everybody's insurance low from that standpoint. To give you an idea, the CWCP pool gave back over four million dollars to the county members last year. And then out of the CAP pool, we gave back over five hundred thousand dollars. And then your contributions sit in an account and they, that account earns interest. So it's, that's a benefit as well, because then all county members, it's not like your money's just sitting there not doing anything for us. So we gave back over nine hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to county members last year as well. What did that do for, like, out of that four million dollars, you got back ninety-two thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. Out of the five hundred thousand, you got back eight, eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. And then of the nine hundred and seventy-five dollars in interest, you got back twenty-one thousand, eighty-seven dollars for a grand total of a hundred and twenty-two thousand, a hundred and twenty-two dollars. That, that's the first time I've ever had that little, uh, writing there. In terms of your loss ratio last year, uh, you were sitting at a one point zero three, which is the second highest tier. There's, there's multiple tiers based on the, your loss factor of how much claims were paid out. We're gonna find out that one of the big reasons for that was a, um, that was on the CWCP, was a work comp claim that costs quite a bit of money from that standpoint. Out of the CAP side, your second lowest from the bottom, so we still have a little bit of room there to get you down another, uh, another tier on the loss ratio factor from there. And then I always like to start off with, how did we finish last year when we do these five years? So I'll have you turn to the one without the graphs. And as you can see, this report, it was ran from.
Dana, what do you mean, we have two, you guys two?
Yep, so it's gonna be the one underneath the chicken scratch.
This one?
Nope.
The one with the chicken scratch, got it. Turn the page from the chicken scratch.
There you go.
Got it.
And so you can see that this report was ran from one, one of twenty-four to December thirty-first of twenty-four. So it's just that snapshot in time, how did we finish last year and how many claims? We had a total of five claims for twenty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars. We're still seeing, uh, as a pool, uh, in a, as a whole, auto-related claims are our biggest exposure. So they, not only are they an exposure, they can hit multiple lines of coverage. So they could have, obviously you gotta put the vehicles back together. You could have a county vehicle, a third-party vehicle, you could also have a county vehicle and property. You could also have a county vehicle and sheriff liability on top of that. You could have a county vehicle and workers' comp anytime you have an auto-related incident. So it could hit those multiple lines. The big trend that I have here is that the three auto claims, two of them were backing related claims. One of the things that we've been really pushing hard on is for counties to consider adopting a no-backing policy. In other words, back into a parking spot, not out of a parking spot. Or trying to do pull-throughs and things like that. And then the larger vehicles that have those blind spots, they're using spotters to go in and out. Because it's amazing how many, uh, times people are just backing into the buildings or ballards and things like that. Very easy to prevent. And we've started, loss control started pushing this in twenty-twenty-three. And we had, at that time, we had seventeen percent of the total amount of claims were backing related. Well, now in twenty-twenty-four, we dropped that down to just seven percent. So we have a ten, ten percent improvement by implementing those policies.
It's huge.
So any questions on the CAP?
One of the, uh, items on here is claimant struck a pothole on a bike. Is that something we're liable for?
Oftentimes they'll bring us in, but you can see it was zero dollars liability. But they, they may, they may claim that it was, they, they may try to claim county negligence or county liability. We see that a lot, like when they're grading the roads, if there's a rock or something that's left up there or, you know, if the road didn't get, hasn't been maintained properly, and there's large potholes, they, they can still submit the claim. We're still gonna do what we can and defend the county.
Okay.
So.
Um, the biggest item jumping out is vandalism. And I have a question about that, that you may or may not know the answer to, but, um, does CTSI ever help with, um, adding weight to pressing charges on these kinds of things?
Certainly if there are, um, if there are charges to be had, that's where law enforcement needs to get involved and actually, and, and take it from that standpoint. And when that occurs, to let the claims reps know that that's occurring as well, so that they can, and they can add that, that factor in. If the claims reps never know that there's anything there, they're just looking at the information that's provided to. So what I'm saying is the more information that we can supply it, the claims reps to go to Batford County better.
Okay, is that, I think I just heard that, um, I believe the person responsible for this is back out on the streets again.
Yes, I saw him the other day. He chatted with me, he was very odd.
Oh, yeah, it's, that is terrifying, to be honest.
And one of the things, and this has come up a couple of times with various, uh, counties with vandalism, because we did have one down south where somebody actually threw a Molotov cocktail into the courthouse. And, and it was classified as vandalism, so it's covered by CTSI. Hey, there is, there was a rumor out there that, oh, it's domestic terrorism and we're not gonna cover it. CTSI's covering it. Uh, but when you have these types of incidences, one of the things from a loss control standpoint is that we take a step and look at a threat assessment and is that an opportunity then to put a better product in? Something that's more resistant to what had just occurred? For instance, in the courthouse case, where we have had some areas where their Health and Human Services Department, the windows have been smashed out and things like that. Is that a good time to maybe put some more hardened glass in there or, or impact-resistant glass? To reduce that instead of just putting like and kind back in? Because we realize that the like and kind doesn't hold up to the environment that it's exposed to. So just opportunities there.
Yeah, it's just crazy to me that instead of, it, yeah, I don't know, I guess it's a conversation for a different day maybe, but well, I appreciate your guys' efforts to look at backend solutions. Even though I feel like we should, could solve it on the front end, but like, seems like, uh, there's not much you can do, I guess, other than be prepared, huh?
Well, and then, you know, taking those root causes and contributing factors and then applying those elsewhere in the county instead of just looking at it in its own silent. Did it just happen at this department? Well, could it happen somewhere else in the county and taking that and, and kind of, that's that proactive.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good call, yeah.
That's also an advantage of being part of the pool, because that's something that I try to work with the counties on. When I hear about other incidences that have occurred around the state, I try to bring knowledge to the other counties. So just because you haven't had that type of claim doesn't mean you might not wanna look at being prepared for it. So. Alright, flipping over to the next page there. This is just a idea of a pool as a whole, how many total claims that they had. They had a total as of six hundred and six claims for eight million, thirty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars with the average cost of thirteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars. The next page is kind of the breakdown of what types of claims you see there. And we did start to have an increase last year of fires. And then we've had a couple, obviously, this year as well. But there is a, there is something to think about on some of these fires is some of them were battery-related. We did have a, a laptop computer catch fire with its lithium ion battery in a courthouse and smoked the courthouse out.
That's gotta be an ever-increasing occurrence, I guess, these days.
It is, especially when sometimes in road and bridge shops and things like that, maintenance shops, they just set those cordless batteries on in the charger and they just leave them until they, they need, they should be pulled out and not left. They should be charging when people are around, that's something to think about there.
Yeah.
And then also having the, the right kind of fire extinguisher as well. So right now NFPA has not updated any of their fire extinguisher standards. But there are new fire extinguisher technologies out there that can deal with the thermal runaway that occurs on those types of batteries.
You know, it's, uh, interesting to me is that, um, I got into remote-controlled cars with my kiddo. And, uh, these things come with so many levels of like warnings and like layers of security. They're like, oh, you've gotta keep your batteries for this car in this fireproof bag when you're not in use. And like, they, they don't do that with computers or like electric skateboards or anything else like that. It's kind of weird to me that for some reason that industry was way ahead of the curve with fire prevention on the batteries that they use for those little cars, because they're all the same styles of batteries, you know?
Yeah. But, but it's something to be aware of as a, as a growing trend, the more, the more battery technology that we rely on day-to-day and cordless and stuff like that, it's something, something to think about. You can also see if you start to add up all of the vehicle-related incidences, you can see very quickly it comes up to, to the top as one of the top loss drivers in there as well. So that's where, you know, Lake County is on the front end of, of preventative measures over the years. You have always invited me up to do, uh, defensive driving classes with, um, with county staff and, uh, new members and, and whatnot. You call, I haul, I come up and, and we, we sit down and, and do that. It's also a good class to have because it's not just defensive driving, but we also talk about some of the new laws that go into effect as well, um, that sometimes, given the travel nature of the county, uh, you may not be aware of, of certain, uh, laws that went into effect just because they haven't, you're, you're not exposed to that type of traffic pattern, so. Any questions on that? Alright, then we'll flip over to the work comp side and we can jump right to the first page there of that one with the chicken scratch on it. Had a total, again, this is a one year of twenty-twenty-four, total of ten claims for two hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars. And you can see that the main loss driver in that is that one indemnity claim. So in workers' comp, indemnity are those lost time claims where you're paying lost time as well. And this happened to have been an accidental discharge, uh, claim that occurred with one of the deputies. So that's your, that's your main shock loss driver there. No other big trends other than we know up here slipping falls are a, a concern, obviously, with the freeze thaw in the, in the winter months.
Dana, do, would you have any, would you guys have any say on the, because as I understand it, those weapons have no safety, is that what happened? Or can you talk about it?
So I do know that, I believe that the sheriff did, uh, change over and get rid of the, uh, this was a result of a Sig Sauer P320 pistol. And there have been allegations and demonstrated events nationwide of accidental just discharges of that particular firearm. There have been incidences involving the, the US military, as well, as a matter of fact, a, a person that works for my wife, her son was actually one of them in the military, the same thing occurred where it actually discharged out of the holster. It was still in the holster and discharged. So, uh, some are saying that it may have been that the slide that hasn't been put on correctly and that didn't follow the process. You know, that it's still in court litigation from, from that right now with, with SIG. And there could be a class action coming.
So you got, we would get paid back if there was, or we'd get a portion of that?
Potentially. I mean, it, it's, it's not out of the, it's not out of the realm of, of us, but, you know, ultimately, we've got to take care of what our, our responsibility is. And we do know that we have taken steps to, I, I think every one of them were changed out of last year.
Yeah, okay.
When that occurred, so.
They changed to Glock or something?
Yeah, I think he went to Glock, so.
They make a safety add-on, you can put on those like aftermarket, but then you get into the whole realm of, uh, modified firearms and all kinds of litigation that comes with using a modified.
I do know that the trigger was upgraded to the, to the newer model as well, where the earlier generations of the P320 actually had a problem with the, with the older triggers. And they were actually firing out of battery as well. So then they, they had a, uh, a voluntary recall to upgrade the triggers on those, on those firearms, so. I, I've done a lot of work on, on this one because it concerned me.
Yeah.
Quite a bit, and then to get that message out to all the other sheriff, uh, members as well, so.
Yeah, that hurts.
Yeah. Any questions on county-specific claims on that? Any questions on county specific claims on that?
Are there other um suggestions or risk management that you would suggest to our county based on some of the other things appear like slip falls, tripping, et cetera? Like, are there certain areas that you're seeing that we're not maybe maintaining as much as we could be to be avoiding some of these claims?
You know, um I'm always an advocate of proper footwear and then three points of contact getting in and out of a vehicle. Um, there was a program that was developed years ago in Estes Park by their visitors community for the free thaw stuff. And they would have um the like the big Walmart tumblers where they're reusable, sustainable. And and they would have the uh the rock salt and sand that in inclement weather, people could take a bucket or a glass of that and and shake the salt out to their vehicles. There's enough leftover they can put it in their cup holder. And then when they get to where they're going, they can sprinkle it out and actually step. And because a lot of times slips and falls can occur getting in and out of vehicles and that that one foot instability. Um, and then obviously, these are not advisable in the uh in inclement weather times. Uh, but but footwear that has good ankle support and having that uh maybe as a county policy, you know, or just a reminder, a a quick safety tip out to to staff, you know, as as we get into our colder, snowier, snowier months. That that'll help out a lot.
And it's the beginning, early and late season, you know, that are the worst, like you're saying, those free free stall cycles. I keep a bucket of sand by my mailbox because our road turns into a sheet of ice and it's a hill. Just a couple handfuls of sand, it changes the whole thing. It's like one day the mailman's sliding right past the mailbox and you put a couple handfuls of sand out there, next day he stops on a dime.
Give them a little traction.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you know, those those are all all things and then, you know, throughout the year, you notice where ice is forming and then during the mud season at the time, when you see puddles, that might be an area to to look at, uh to redo for drainage and things like that and get the drainage away from the walking areas of of our facilities, so. So keep in mind a slip and fall on the comp side of things is is employees slip and fall from the liability side of things would be a third party slip and fall.
Yeah, um, oh, Candace, this is all stuff that would probably be a good for refresher for whoever's going to be um handling facilities.
Dana, can you just, it feels a little weird to me to be talking about workers' comp claims in an open meeting. Is this pretty typical or do you ever do this in executive session? Like, how common is it to talk about workers' comp claims in public?
In general, we can, we can talk about a number of incidences, but we we do keep the people.
Yeah, it's just a small town, our government isn't so big that we don't have that many gunshot wounds, you know? Just curious because it felt a little off.
Yeah, and we we certainly could do that if if that's that's what you would like.
Just curious what's typical, because we're new to this and I just want to understand where I should be calibrating my comfort.
Sure, sure, and and we can adjust as as needed. That's that's how however you want to do that. Generally, we just give a a rough rough estimate and and certainly, you know, when if a if a big incident occurs uh with the county, a lot of us already know, uh you know, what that what that was or around the around that particular incident uh as a whole, but you know, we try to just keep the numbers, keep stick to the numbers at that point. But if you need more information, we we could definitely uh move that over into a more secure setting. So just like we did on the uh on the cap side, the pool had a total of seven hundred and forty six claims for six million thirty nine thousand eight hundred dollars with our average cost of eight thousand dollars. And you can see slips and falls are one of our bigger incidences and to bring awareness uh as to those types of of claims that we see in that's it's Colorado. We get a lot of that and a lot of them are because of that uh freestyle, slipping and falling, getting in and out of equipment and proper footwear.
Seems like the law enforcement, three hundred and seventy four claims for an average of six thousand dollars, so these are smallish claims, can you expand on it a little bit and maybe how a sheriff could start to mitigate that?
So.
That's in the whole pool.
That'd be the whole pool.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. And one of the things that I do for the sheriff is I will pull out a report very similar to this of five year loss trends that compared the sheriff's office with the other sheriff offices throughout the entire state. So that they can get an understanding of how do they compare with the rest of the the average of the rest of the pool members that are in. So that's a really valuable piece to be able to have that kind of data um with the with the pool and within the pool.
That would really help us like hone in on which departments we could be so giving a little more effort to in their risk management is to see how they're how they stack up.
Absolutely, which that'll be right into this next next track.
What uh does a typical claim look like for a law enforcement claim?
You know, it could be everything, anything from zero dollars all the way to.
I mean, like, is it an injury, like you broke his finger, putting on the handcuffs or you violated his civil rights or?
Yeah, you're gonna have all of those, but a lot of, you know, you're gonna get a lot of bites, kicks, scratches, bruises.
So it could go to either, could be the officer filing that.
That's pretty much it.
I don't think that's one of, I don't think that's one of the things you can claim for. Because you can't prove repetitive stress injuries as easily administratively. Dana, is it true that you can't really have many where I manage workers' comp claims, repetitive stress injuries and administrative work were really hard to file claims for? Like tendonitis, whatever, elbows, et cetera, is that still the case?
What we would do, obviously, we would say any anytime you have someone that that has a complaint, file the claim.
Right.
And that way, then what we do is there there are assessments that are done on what that person does. And then they can make the determination from that standpoint. So it's it's not a, it's not a hundred percent, but it it definitely can be, it can be difficult. But at the same time, there are times when.
It goes through, yeah.
Absolutely. It it typically what you would see is like if there's a demonstration of all of a sudden a extreme spike in the overall work that they're doing, like somebody just all of a sudden they got put into, you know, four weeks of constant you know, data crunching or something, data entry, whereas they hadn't done that. And then all of a sudden, there's just this massive demand that that goes in. That might be a a a trigger point there as well, because you can show an increase uh from that from being a normal, normal job.
Right. It's sort of repetitive stress, though, that's hard to prove, where you've been doing it for twenty years and all of a sudden your tendon gives out, it's hard to claim that.
Yeah, yeah, it 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 can be, but it's not uncommon, I mean.
But you do it anyway, you get, you write it up.
File the claim, do your, do as, gather as much information as you can so that the claims rep can obviously um have all and as much information to go to that for the county as possible. And and you know, at the end of the day, the employee is getting what what's there, right? So, because it is about putting them back together, getting them back to work too, so. Yeah, um and then you got the ADA accommodations that come in with that potential as well, accommodating work schedules, so all of that stuff kind of ties in at that point, so. That being said, jump into the five year, I won't take much longer.
This is interesting.
What we have here is the graph that you see here on for the last five years. And you can see where you kind of had a little bit of a heartbeat going on in in twenty two from twenty. So next year, when I come and do this, twenty's gonna drop off, so that's gonna yield positives for the county if we keep our yield down in twenty five, right? Because it, you know, that it all it all goes into that loss factor of how much was paid. And so we're again talking about the cap side of it. And you can see that we're on a really nice downward trend here. Um, I like to say since Dana was here, that's where we're going.
Good job, Dana.
But I I won't take, I won't take all of that credit because it is about county staff and and um and and the partnership that we have. So flipping over, this is a five year trend from twenty twenty to twenty twenty four as a result, ending in twelve of twelve thirty one. So it is a snapshot in time, we had a total of thirty three claims in the last five years for six hundred and twenty five thousand one hundred and seventy three dollars with our average cost of eighteen thousand dollars. And you asked about what having a report that kind of gives you an idea of what areas to to look at and concentrate. We break them down by the top five frequency and the top five severity by department. Now, keep in mind, administration doesn't mean that's your administrative staff. It also means that it's buildings and things like that, so when you have a building issue, it can also be in that administrative piece too. Typically, what we see on the cap side, because of the high exposure, particularly on the auto side, is road, bridge and law enforcement, depending on the county, they they will flip back and forth. And then, of course, out on our eastern plains where we have wind and hail damage, potentially sometimes the administrative side of things or potentially snow load where snow comes in and the snow load actually has a has a uh problem there too. So right there, you've got our top five frequency and severity uh with administrative, road and bridge and law enforcement. And then the severity side is law enforcement, administration and road and bridge is really low, so that's 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 good. That's really good from the liability side of things. So then we break it down, I'll say in top five frequency and severity by what was the incidence that occurred. And so we can see here from the the top five frequency, that's rolling the dice every time. Every time you have an incident, we're rolling the dice of of paying a a high claim out every time that comes in. But we can see how many uh vehicle related incidences, you had twelve vehicle related incidences just just on vehicles alone, so that's a a frequency issue that we like to stay on top of and which I've been saying that we have been uh with having that defensive driving class periodically with staff.
It's also the highest exposure activity, right? So like it's probably gonna be the highest in most counties.
Absolutely, it is, it is on both sides. And then, like I said, on the for the annual, it also has the effect of hitting multiple lines of coverage as well. So when you really add the total of an auto accident, you can see how it will really climb up quickly from that standpoint. Uh, we did have one, um, I believe one claim here of the employee employment term uh aspect that we did have that, and that's tied into the administrative side of the house.
Is that employee termination, subject to deduct, what does that mean?
Uh, subject to a deductible if there was, if there was a, if there was an issue pertaining to that. I I can get you some more information on that. I I don't have a whole lot, just that's on the claim side of it, but I can get you a little bit more explanation here. And so and I can show you on the next page, so that's where all of the information is at. For what went into those bar graphs that you saw, this is the actual, uh so you actually had two claims out of the sheriff's office that caused that problem in twenty twenty four. So that being said, one of the things that CTSI does have is we have Siri Vincel, who is our HR specialist on with the loss control department. She can come up and help and be that sounding board that if there is uh employment related issues, you can always, staff can always reach out to CTSI and and hook up with Siri and get a a a second opinion on stuff too. So just a help ball from that.
On on this uh this page we're on here, the administration section at the bottom, we've got the airport and temperature extremes, would that be like a frozen pipe? I I guess those would fall under leak discharge and overflow.
Yeah, that.
Which has happened.
Yeah, they did, they did have that out there at the at the training trailer out there. They had uh the the temperatures got so cold it did freeze and then it flooded and everything else like that out there.
And this is over the last five years, right?
Yep. So are there any other claims on there? We had a total, um, yeah, we already covered the the total, but you can see where all those backing related incidences uh were were happening, even backing out of the sheriff's department as well.
Over the last five years.
All those sheriffs, new sheriff's vehicles should have backup cameras in it.
That's gotta help a huge amount since those have been implemented.
Yeah, it really does.
That'd be an easy uh addition to some of the bigger vehicles, I mean, you just.
Some she want.
Yeah, they they are, um, and I think I I have even seen where uh some counties have started putting them on their on their plow plow trucks and then also on some of their equipment as well.
Way to way to affect ours.
Yeah, whatever.
What's, what was that?
Just really interesting, it's really interesting.
Um, something else that some counties have started to implement as well is dash cameras as well, so that when they do have an incident, that they do have the footage from what actually occurred. Some of them have started putting them in their road and bridge trucks because of how people are acting around the plows when they are trying to plow, and then that really does show causation. It it can be a double edged sword because it does say what our drivers were doing as well. But here's what I will tell you, is that every one of our vehicles that we drive right now has an airbag sensor that will and can be used to recreate the inputs of what was going on in that vehicle at that particular time too. So that that information can be pulled and and crash scene.
Like a black box?
It is like a black box, so your vehicle can tell on you currently.
Even if the airbag doesn't go off, it's collecting that data and storing it?
You're seventy three, so I can bust them.
I don't have those anymore.
Yeah.
Kind of want to buy.
So just just be be cognizant of that aspect as well.
Yeah.
That being said, we want to look at how did we fare to the county over the uh county pool F over the last five years? The pool had thirty one hundred claims for seventy eight million three hundred and fifteen thousand six hundred dollars with our average cost of twenty five thousand dollars. But here you can see the same breakdown of the top five frequency and severity of the type of incidences. And you can see there where they're all the top five on the frequency is vehicles. And then we do have a shock loss there uh that is skewing the fatality side of the house. Um, and that was uh as a result of a of a uh of a shock loss shooting that occurred several years ago. That being said, wind and hail is still a a big concern for our out east counties. But arrest related um claims have have really kind of started to rise up as well. Where where there's a lot more litigious um activity going on when when somebody feels that they've been wrong.
That's a nationwide trend, I imagine.
That being said, just like on our midyear, we break that down just so you can see the types of claims. And once again, you'll see the vehicle related incidences being uh rising to the cream of the crop there, so. Flipping over to this little pie chart here, this is our CWCP side of the house, so our work comp. We do see that we did have a little, that little bit of a spike. Uh, however, um, it's gonna take about two years before twenty one comes off. Do you remember I said that you were at the second highest of the of those tiers? Once twenty one comes off, you're gonna come down.
So we got another spike for that accidental discharge.
But it's already included in there, so as long as twenty five.
Goes off.
Stays stays good and.
Yeah, yeah. Twenty twenty-one will come off.
Yeah. So.
For the foreseeable future. Can't wait.
Keep everybody safe, knock on wood. There we go. Flipping flipping over to the pie chart, we had a total of fifty-five claims for five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight dollars, with our average cost of nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars. This is the work comp now. And so we break it down into the top five frequency and severity. And we can see on the frequency side of the house, administration, law and law enforcement, and road and bridge. Again, you're gonna normally see law enforcement, the road and bridge kind of go hand in hand because of the physical nature of what they're doing. In terms of that severity, you have that shock loss there of in the law enforcement. But in the last five years, there were quite a few claims that came out of the law enforcement side of the house. So. And road and bridge is really down. And that, I'm gonna tell you, your road and bridge department is doing fantastic. In terms of comparing it to other counties, they're doing really good. So you've got.
We gotta get it in the works for them. They get a lot of experience.
Yeah. Then we bring you down to the top five frequency and severity once again by the type of claims. And you can see, just like with what we've been seeing on the mid-year, the pool members as a whole. And now in our five-year, you're gonna see it again in the for the pool for the five-year slip and falls. Obviously, are the are the biggest driver in terms of the severity. And then that that single claim of a hundred and eighty-three dollars was the next. Just like in the five-year, for the cap, we break it down into what went into those those graphs here. The one thing I will point out is that we had an average cost of nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars. But our average cost with the pool was seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight. However, when you take that one claim out.
Yeah. A little lower.
Yeah. So. So any questions on any of those claims?
This is fascinating. Yeah, I do have a little bit more of a broader question, but something that's been on my mind with regards to this as as a whole. Do you guys, so like a lot of times there'll be, and this is nationwide, it probably happens all the time, where someone will bring a claim forward. And a claim has something that you know they wouldn't win in court, but it ends up being cheaper to just settle with this person and give them a portion or whatever. Is where is like the deciding factor of like, okay, we're, I I know like dollars and cents is probably the main factor, obviously. But like, in certain situations, don't you think it's like, is there anyone or any metric that decides like this is gonna embolden or contribute to like a continuation of this kind of behavior where people are bringing things that maybe they wouldn't win in court, but they know it will be more costly to just prove that? So they're gonna get a settlement regardless? Like, it is a new subject for me and it's like, wow, that's like a thing, you know, that where, okay, we're just gonna make this go away because that's dollars and cents wise, the cheapest. But I feel like, even though that makes sense in that specific instance, the more it happens, I feel like the more the problem grows. So where is that like line? Is that is that a conversation that happens on your guys' end or is there like?
It is. Every claim is evaluated individually. And we and we really look at that. I mean, we we do have to be sensitive to the county's money. Because it's the taxpayers. We have to be good stewards with our taxpayers' money. However, you bring up a good point, and it is something that sometimes can set a precedent to where someone's like, oh, they do the math in their head and say, if I ask for this, then I know it's under what it would cost to defend it, right? And so there there are those times that they do that. Just like at the same time, if a severe incident occurs, first, one of the first questions they ask is, what's your limits? Because then they're gonna go up to your limit. They're gonna start there, right? So, but like I say, our our claims reps and and claims managers, they're keyed in on that. I mean, they're they're not, you know, they've been doing it for a long time. And that's all we do is the is the county side of it. That's that's where having that benefit of knowing the industry, knowing what we do and where we can where we can fight it. Like, there are times that in in my defensive driving class, I talk about having staff allow their personal information to be photographed by a third party. Because there are times where governmental immunity comes into play and we will do that. Well, then, now that person has the city or the county's staff member and they'll try to go after them that way. And some counties have put in where they have, okay, they may have a make it right fund where they they go through the county attorney and actually have it drawn up to where if the county is potentially at fault. You know, we've had road graders completely crush vehicles and its equipment, its governmental immunity, and we will apply it. But then the county's like, we really, the least we could do is maybe pay their deductible.
Yeah.
And so you could potentially have a make it right fund from that standpoint. So there's other sides of that same equation too, where, you know, we we're gonna weigh that weigh that option. But typically, if if there is an out, we're gonna take that out.
Dana, do you serve all of the current counties?
Currently, I do.
It bounces in and out, doesn't it?
Yeah, because Steve Picharich, he was the other loss control specialist on staff. He he ended up resigning and going back to his home state of Minnesota. So right now, I'm the only one for the whole state. Until hopefully next month, we have somebody starting. And they'll probably be taking the the south, south counties, and I stay with the with the north counties. But I typically do.
Are we south or north?
You're north.
Or right in the middle?
You're north. I.
Sometimes we're south, sometimes we're north.
Yeah, it we 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 look at it as how easy is it to get from off of I seventy to the county? And then, you know, I go all the way down to San McGill and then so everything's south is, south of you is south.
Yeah. Okay. Um, what about like IT issues and phishing, et cetera? I did see something from CTSI that was like warning about phishing scams a few months ago.
We do have those tech updates that we'll push out for that. And then.
But I don't see them on claims. Is it, I don't see them as like popping up as high severity or most frequent. So are you seeing any trends with phishing or even, you know, there was all that like?
Ransom?
Hostage?
We have had a couple of counties, but it hasn't triggered a massive trend or a or a data set that's that brings it up. But it does happen and that's why we put those tech updates out and things like that.
It has the potential to be a massive one in the right scenario, I imagine.
Yeah. Yeah. But you know, the good thing is, a lot of our counties, and I I saw it here today, you're you're scanning attachments.
It it never finished.
We always scan, you scan forever.
Yeah. So those, you know, those those are out there. And certainly, if there are things that, you know, you're you're wondering, please reach out. It's free. It doesn't cost the county anything for CTSI to come up. And and with our trainings and everything, it's all free for you, so.
Thank you.
With that, I'm 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 glad I finally got up here to meet all of you in person, so.
You've met us before, you just didn't wear that mask.
Individually or not as a whole group.
We were super green when we met last time.
Yeah. Well.
Overwhelmed.
With that, that's all I have. And and the only thing I ask is, do you have anything you need me to take back? Or is there something over this next year that you specifically want CTSI to work with with the staff on?
I guess my curiosity would be, I appreciate being able to see the pool averages versus our averages. But it would be neat to see if it's possible to see like where we rank on the full list of the sixty-four counties. Like, are we at the very, are we like, we like crushing in some of these areas or are we?
In the road and bridge area, you are crushing it.
Yay! Happy to tell my goal.
Do you operate pits?
Yeah.
Rodent, okay?
Well, we have a pit. I don't know if they use it that much.
Okay. There is a silica standard that is out to consider when you are thinking about budgeting. There is a new EMTIA silica standard about evaluating your silica exposure and whether or not you fall under the action level of requiring a formal a formal program, which would include when you bring in a new miner, respiratory fit test and pulmonary function testing and potentially x-rays from that as well. So it's just something to think about. And then one of the other things that was made a determination by the Denver area, which that's another advantage of CTSI loss control, is I can go to the the entities and not single out a county. Like, hey, this county has a question about this. And then all of a sudden, the federal government's showing up with EMTIA at one of your pits. So I took it, the issue came up of the truck drivers, are they considered minors or not? Because there's a provision in there for commercial truck drivers to be exempt from being considered a minor and subjected to EMTIA standards. However, if they enter the pit three consecutive days, they're considered a minor. And so they need to have the new miner class, which CTSI does have. And then we do the annual refresher on that as well. So those are.
Does that, is that just for county-run pits or is that for a private pit?
All pits.
And so this is a new state law or a federal?
Federal, EMTIA.
Federal law, EMTIA, it's a silica threshold?
Yes.
And?
So you you have to have air monitoring. And the air monitoring is required every six months. Anytime you change pit configuration or you change geology.
And that applies to our existing privately-run pit? They would now need to start getting tested. And any truck driver that goes on there multiple times a day would have.
Three consecutive days.
Three consecutive days. So if you have a county-owned and ran pit.
We do, but we don't use it. I guess my question is more of the privately-held pit. What, how does this new federal rule apply to them?
If it's a mining operation and it's it's EMTIA-regulated pit, it it falls under the under that. Even though it's just county, that's still an EMTIA-regulated pit, you fall under that. Unlike OSHA, where the county doesn't necessarily follow the OSHA standards. They're not, they're not required. We recommend them because they're best practices. But EMTIA is a different ballgame, that EMTIA can come in and find the county. We actually did have one county, they were they were fined a a near fatal citation for a dirty portage on in their pit. So I'm like, how dirty does a portage on have to be to be a near fatal? But apparently, if the turn almost touches a turkis, it's potentially a fatal, so.
My goodness. So EMTIA is M S H A, that's Mining Safety.
Safety and Health Administration, yeah. And and certainly, if there's more questions to follow up, please reach out and I can I can send you some more information on that. That's something I've been making sure that all commissioners know going into budget, that there could be a potential requirement of that. So you have that knowledge when you are going into budgets, so.
Oh, Dana, thank you. I'll definitely be following up.
Yeah.
Appreciate you.
You bet.
Questions? Our incoming county attorney, Matt Hobbs, just came in, he's right behind you, so another connection you wanna make sure.
Yes.
Matt, I saw you try the seat out.
Hi, it was too complicated.
Thought it was uncomfortable. It's your chair.
Any other administrative changes you have going on?
Oh, all of them, you mean?
Yeah. Where are they not?
Candace is new. Candace started with us in April. She was our finance director.
I've I've got your financial information.
And then she's also hiring a deputy county manager, hopefully by the end of the month. Will also be getting a new Office of Emergency Management Director. We just got a new finance director. And we're getting a new IT director. Is that it? And we've got a county attorney?
We're splitting off the fleet and building management?
Anyway, we've got a lot of new directors.
You know what I'm gonna say is you guys have that new car county smell.
I'm surprised you can smell that over our dingy old car pits and and stuffy musty room in here.
Dana, I was the finance director before, so we actually, I wanted to email you a lot of the stuff for interns.
Yes, yeah. Okay. It's all starting to make sense. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Thank you.
I'm always interested by your stuff.
I love that.
Yeah. You're 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 one of the few. Some there, I I show up, their eyes glaze over. Oh, no, we're just gonna talk numbers.
That's really weird.
Their loss.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Couple jokes I wanted to make.
That was a good one. All right. Get back to this agenda. Are you heading back downhill there, Dana?
I can, unless there's something else you may wanna want me to stick around for, I can do that.
No, not, no, I was just wondering what your day looked like, how that driving goes. I will be reaching out about a couple of questions I did have. There's some other things at some point here, but concerns, questions, and yeah.
I'm gonna stop down and visit the sheriff.
Nice.
You know, it's always good to check in with them too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
Awesome.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
See you later.
Drive safe. All right, moving on. Agenda item number three, overview and discussion of the designation of fire suppression ponds in Lake County. This says led by the B O C C. But I'm gonna be handing this off to someone I imagine.
So we've got quite a few parties. I see staff is out there about to come in here. I thought maybe we, thank you. I thought maybe we can start with our our friends from Twin Lakes who had made the request for this. And then staff, Bryce has asked a few people to join us, so maybe give our other parties opportunities to talk. But start with the requests that we have from whoever will be presenting for tonight.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know Rachel Zinkinella, Division Chair, will be here. She's just waiting to be in this late.
I'm guessing, is Kelly, or do you wanna start?
I am here. Do you think we should wait until Rachel gets here?
Sure. I mean, she said ten twenty was their ETA, so we're okay with waiting a few minutes.
Could you afford a privilege?
Yeah.
Good, yeah.
All right, we'll pause for just a minute then. Thanks, Kelly.
Okay, yeah, let's take.
And Chris, I just want to introduce you to our water engineers. They came up from Front Range today. So this is Adam Kremers and Skylar Ziliaks.
Thank you so much.
You guys?
Yeah. Adam and Candace.
Yep.
Yep, so these are who I talk to basically every week about what we're doing in the water world.
Yeah, we can.
Good. Good. I'm.
Bryce, could you say the names of the engineers again or a little more slowly?
Yeah, sure, Kelly. This is Adam Kremers and Skylar Ziliaks, and they're with Brown and Caldwell.
It's nice to meet both of you. Thank you so much.
I'm really good at keeping secrets. I'm sorry. It's time to schedule that conversation.
Should we, do you guys wanna actually pause?
Yeah, let's go ahead and pause this. Okay, ten twenty-five, let's resume this work session. We are on agenda item number three. The overview and discussion of the designation of fire suppression ponds. The overview and discussion of the designation of fire suppression ponds in Lake County. We are starting with, were we handing off to Kelly Sweeney first?
Mm-hmm.
All right, hi Kelly.
Hi, thank you all so much. Um, I wasn't sure if you were talking about fire suppression ponds throughout Lake County and all of our different rural areas that may need it, but I will focus for a minute just on the Markham Pond and certainly defer to Larry Markham to fill in the blanks. I noticed Kurt Schwiger is in the back there as well. Um, we have gone through uh, the fire suppression pond application and provided you with all the information there and what, what we were able to address and show that we met, but I think critical things to recognize are there is no cistern or water uh, spot beyond that pond within a thousand feet that can be used for fire suppression. There are fifty-six historical structures in Twin Lakes um, and the Heritage Park that would benefit from the uh, proximate suppression pond. There are additional buildings and homes that do not qualify, as well as thirty-five nonhistoric homes along County Road twenty-six and two along County Road twenty-six K. There are two homes off of Highway eighty-two before the village and on the western side of Angel View One that would also benefit from the pond. Um, if there's ever a rural area that cried out for having one of the fire suppression ponds, it is the one that already exists with an, a working dry hydrant that's installed with access, with permission from the current owners. Um, I know you need to have your own form, but I, I sort of feel when I, I see um, the state engineer and everyone else here, that maybe there's uh, this is a, a hearing or a pre-hearing on why that this pond should not be allowed to be used as a suppression pond. So I don't know if it'd be better to be able to rebut them or what, what's happening here, it is a working session. But I, I defer right now to Larry Markham, the pond sits on his property and I know he is um, very much concerned about a lot of the uh, benefits, environmental, ecological, and water management, so I turn back over to Larry.
Thanks Kelly.
Okay, wait, before we say anything, Kelly, I just wanna be super clear, it's just a work session, this is not a pre-hearing or anything, we're just trying to understand as we, what the need is, what the process is, how does this, understanding the request from Twin Lakes, what is the greater context of our entire county, like this is just informational, so there's no search budding, no decision-making, no pre-hearing situation we're in right now.
Thank you. I really appreciate that, cause when I read the statute, it is something that we apply, that the county applies to and sends to the state engineer and they have an opportunity then to make their determinations. It's not that you get a predetermination and then don't even choose to try to ask for it or go through the appeal process.
Totally, yes, and I would say I understand that, but we just wanna, we wanna understand what our process is and it's best to know from the people who would be making that determination, what their expectations are and what their process is, so that's why they're here today.
Perfect.
Sorry, back, back to you Andy.
No, back to Larry.
Yeah, um, sort of play off what Kelly was mentioning. It's one of Colorado's rare treasures, they're in Twin Lakes, all these architectural antiques that we have, and they are dry and ready to blow up in flames at the slightest provocation. And having a source of water right there in the village could go a long ways to save those precious couple of minutes that Trump sure damn could talk about, so is in um, minimizing the amount of hazard that it causes to the, the aging population for one and the, and the building, but also to those precious old buildings that are there, part of Colorado's mining history. So we see this as a, an incredibly important resource, the, the fire suppression pond in preserving what is such a, a beautiful and magnificent area. So that's, that's kind of my perspective on it, I'm sure there's others in our village that would like to, to comment as well as we move forward through this process.
Great, thanks Larry. Um, who are we hearing from next on this?
Does anyone else that was asking to have this option want to, look?
I'm Kurt Schwiger from the village, also the village.
Hey Kurt.
Uh, and just a, a little cap on what uh, what Kelly was saying, uh, in Gordon Acres and, and the village itself, there are surprising large number of residential units, eighty-eight of them. And then thirty-two more parks that don't have buildings on them, and so there is uh, there's room for expansion there, some room for expansion. But one of the real uh, key problems is we have no infrastructure there. Yeah, and, and uh, as Larry was saying, a spark coming over the hill or from within the village itself could be devastating.
And that pond historically has been a resource for volunteer fire department. When we moved to Twin Lakes, there was an active volunteer fire department, they installed the dry hydrant in there and they would solve precautionary, to help protect the village.
Um, what are like current uh, reasons we would, that anyone would be against something like this, is there anyone?
Andy, would you mind if we let Jan online?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's Jan.
Jan, uh, I did not see your hand raised, you can go ahead if you wanna chime in here.
Hi, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good morning, well, this is Jan Muzal, two hundred Lang Street in Twin Lakes, unfortunately I can't be there in person. I appreciate that you put us so quickly on your working agenda. And um, of course, I'm curious to hear whether there could be any opposition, I can't think of one. And in addition to what my neighbors have done, and I really wanna shout out uh, to Kelly and Larry and Robert and Kurt, how much work they have put in there, and so we're all familiar with the criteria that the state uses to decide on this. And that has all been completed, uh, last time when they presented, you already heard from Fire Chief Daly, it's not just historic structures. I count in the summer easily hundred, hundred fifty people there, okay, that you're providing help. And not only is it property and people, but how can we send in fire uh, um, you know, firemen and women um, when we don't give them the best tools and the resources, and this is an existing pond. And as you heard, it already was equipped with a dry hydrant a long time ago. I look at it as a win-win-win-win, if I don't wanna mention even more, you know, the legwork has all been done for you. Like the fire chief said last time, this is the longest process, he cannot, he doesn't have the time to go around the county and do that for many other properties. So the, the work has been done, there's no expense to the county as far as I know. You know, the application is, I think, pretty much ready to go. You would do a lot to improve the safety, like other people mentioned, every minute counts. Just aside, but also just important, I just listened to this amazing report on the big fire in LA, after a fire, after a fire, the fire debris, the hazardous waste that had to be shipped somewhere, that is another safety issue. And of course, if you can fight a fire in the very beginning, the first, whatever you wanna say, half-minute, that could make a difference. And so you have this source in town, and if you're asking, is there any opposition, well, I really can't think of something. If there is one, it would be great to let Kelly or Larry respond to that, so I, I, I appreciate and I hope you will support this. And, and there are many other people that haven't shown up, this is one issue whether it's unanimous in town, as far as I know. Not just unanimous, everybody wished there was a pond already designated, thank you very much.
Thank you Jan. Um, Chief Daly, could you explain to me what a dry hydrant is and what, how that differs from a standard hydrant, a wet hydrant, I guess?
Yeah, so the only real difference is that we're physically drafting from it, we're using our pump on this side to be able to hold water. Where dry, or a regular hydrant has pressure.
Sure, okay, got it, thank you. Uh, Bryce, what are like some of the threats or like problems that, you know, where, like what, how would uh, like, not, not threats, I guess, why, what are like some of the, are there any issues with the pond that you can think of?
Yeah, well, to put it lightly, I mean, we've discussed this with the folks down in Twin Lakes for almost two years now. Um, the reason we haven't come to a designation or anything yet is cause frankly, it's very complicated. There's, there's not, this water system going on down in Twin Lakes is not straightforward, cover standard. So that's why we brought our consulting engineers, um, Adam and Sky, who, you know, help me with our water resources issues every week. And then also Rachel's here, she's the division engineer down in Pueblo and Brittany and Monica as well, they work for the division engineers office in Pueblo. And so they're in charge of DWR's, you know, administration of the entire Arkansas basin. Because of some court cases and things going on down in the Twin Lakes village, they're pretty familiar with the way the water flows down there. So I wanna refer to them, they're to um, talk a little bit more about maybe some of the implications or complications here.
Okay.
And I'd like to be able to comment uh, after I hear some of the historical background on this. But I'd like to be able to get more information, but to comment for response.
Great, okay, sweet, we'll let the front row go here and then we'll get back to you Dana.
Sure. Um, I'm here just to provide information and, and give you guys uh, an opportunity if you have questions, to make sure that we're just getting the facts on, on this issue. Obviously, if the pond qualifies, it qualifies and that's entirely in, in your um, area to make that decision. I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page, because I one hundred percent agree that having fire protection for a village like this is incredibly important. But I want to mention that um, a reliable source of water is probably more important when you're looking at that, because the last thing you want is to designate a fire suppression pond, have that wet hydrant and then uh, need it and then not be watering it. And so um, I have a couple of thoughts, I guess, we've been involved with this fire suppression legislation since its concept and it's one of those things that as it's working its way through um, through the law, right, becoming law, there's comments and there's thoughts and there's things, but it's not always um, perfect when it, when it ends up. And so there's a few other things that I think maybe should have been considered that weren't, that is applicable here. And one of those things is that when I was initially thinking about fire suppression ponds, we were thinking about constructed ponds, dams. You know, something that has a control structure, if you will, something that is consistent with respect to its size. Whereas the Markham Pond, as it has been presented to me from the very beginning of our conversations with the town of Twin Lakes, was a beaver pond. And you know, the dam itself is um, leaky at best, right? It's, it's mud and sticks, it's not a constructed dam, it is not a engineered or designed, have you guys looked at it at all? Um, so there's no control in, there's no control out, you couldn't, you know, store water if you were intentionally trying to, because it's just a, a beaver pond that's been utilized with this dry hydrant, which is in the backyard of your house, this Markham, right? So I haven't even seen since the last time I was up there, what that entry and exit issues would be getting over to that hydrant, but that's beside the point. Um, I have multiple times commented in lots of water court cases that decreeing a beaver dam for storage, and in this case, I think it's applicable here too, doesn't seem like the wisest situation to me, because there are regulations in this um, criteria where it has to be the same surface area as it was in nineteen seventy-two to qualify and all of these kinds of things. Well, the very nature of a beaver pond is that the, it's transient, right? Sometimes it's there, sometimes it's not, sometimes it's the same size, sometimes it's bigger, sometimes it's smaller, those are all pieces and parts. So I wanted to note that this is not a constructed dam in the, in the context of what you would normally see from something like an erosion control dam or a livestock water tank or something where there was a specific um, guidance for the construction of said dam. And that's not to say that the Markham Pond couldn't at some point become that, but that's not the current condition. Uh, the second thing is when, again, we were conceiving how this would apply to reservoirs and, and dams that could be a reliable source for fire protection, they were thoughtful in saying that any source of supply could be part of a fire suppression pond. You could pump from a well to fill it, you could, you know, have it on a, a live channel that's always flowing, those kinds of things. The circumstance here specifically is, as Bryce put it, complicated because of um, a series of water court cases that we've been very much involved with since like twenty sixteen um, and that you guys are involved with, because you, the Lake County, has a blanket plan for augmentation that you've been working with the engineers to try and get active, right?
Mm-hmm.
A huge part, thirty-two acre feet of your supply for that plan for augmentation is sourced from the Dairy Three Water Right, which is up Bartlett Gulch all the way up by basically the bridge to the Mount Albert trailhead. And you guys weren't active later in subsequent litigation, but on your behalf, I participated in the water court process to ensure that when you are delivering your changed water right for the purpose of getting credit for your odd plan, that it's not getting usurped on its way to the river, cause that is a necessary part of your plan. You need that water to make it to Twin Lakes so that it can be credited. And what we found was occurring after the twenty, uh, we, we started our physical investigations in this area in like twenty sixteen and what we discovered was that there had been a lot of um, I don't know what you would call it in a polite way, messing around with the stream modification, that's a great word, thank you. There had been a lot of modification to the drainages in that area for, in some cases, hundreds of, like almost a hundred years. The original Dairy Ditch Water Right is an eighteen seventy-four water right and it was originally decreed for use down what's called Corski Creek, which is a tributary to the Arkansas on the north side of the Mount Albert Forbay, that tributary drains down to Hayden Ranch and those water rights were originally decreed for use on the Hayden Ranch.
Mm-hmm.
Somewhere around the nineteen thirties, uh, the same owner bought property in Twin Lakes and moved without a legal change of water right, that water right from its decreed place of use to the use over by the Angel View property. And the long story short is that there, there was a ditch created called Hennessy Ditch that took water in a transbasin diversion from the headwaters up by the bridge and took it out of Corski Creek and put it down, what is now known as Bartlett Gulch. So your water ends up gets, getting quantified and by your decree delivered down to Twin Lakes through Bartlett Gulch, but it wasn't getting there. It was getting taken entirely down over to the Angel View property, because Angel View's predecessor had been diverting for a long time and putting that water into a, a reservoir and it was not legal, none of that was legal. We tried to have a conversation with Angel View's predecessor about it and instead of dealing with it, he sold the property and walked away. So that's what Angel View ended up buying was the four CFS water right, they thought of, of the Lily Pond right. And then we told them, I'm sorry, you can't use this unless you do a change case. So we ended up in a court case with them, we went all the way to court ordered mediation and had a stipulation so that we could protect the two CFS that Lake County is quantifying at the bridge on its way to the river. So there's now a stipulation in place in that water court case that allows Angel View to take anything above six CFS. Um, they can sweep the entirety of that drainage unless you guys are delivering water down through it, in which case they have to bypass two CFS to make sure that your water gets there. But when their infrastructure is fully in place, the entire east Bartlett Gulch is now what we're calling it, that is what runs down um, and ultimately, in, in one capacity, we'll get to that in a second, feeds what's now being called Barrier Ditch, Barrier Creek. The point is, they have the ability to completely dry up that stream legally, which would completely cut off this pond from a source of supply for multiple weeks and a month, give or take, it could be up to half the month or, or three weeks out of four weeks, there's a um, there's a limitation to how much supply is, if they so choose. Now, they're working on trying to negotiate some uh, good neighbor agreements, if you will, to try and preserve that opportunity, but to fill a fire suppression pond that is subject to having its source completely cut off for periods, if not more. for periods, if not more than half of the month, could be problematic for, I think, the fire protection component that you're aiming for. Again, that's not to say that this pond couldn't be worked into a better arrangement. If it had a a good dam, there's also, as far as I can tell, and we can, well, I'll just put it this way, there there's potential to have a supplemental supply for that pond from like a groundwater well or something to that effect under a legal pathway, an O C plan, maybe the county's O C plan. There's lots of ways to skin the cat, but to go directly straight as just a fire suppression pond has some physical concerns, I think, because of that litigation going on on the other side. Now, the Barrier Creek Party, who I'm sure all of you are familiar with the Barn Pond situation, they worked through an S W S P this year to be able to put water back in Barn Pond, which subsequently is how Markham Pond has been refilled. They're covering the E V A P of Markham Pond for the benefit of Markham Pond at this point um through that S W S P, but it's not final. It's a five-year test that they can do, they can be renewed for up to five years until they have to go to water court and come up with a final designation. But the point is, when they go to water court, they're still gonna have to work through opposers and anybody else who takes issue with this case to secure a firm supply of water. So there's a lot of unknowns is the point of all of this, and a lot of it has to do with the negotiations that take place between neighbors over these issues in the next three months to a couple of years. Um, that's a lot to kind of lay on you, there's at least four different water court cases involved in that reach. I can provide more details on those if you need them or if you want them in writing to review or anything like that, but it's just, it's a very complicated area.
Sounds about right for water law in Colorado.
Yeah.
Rachel, what happens, say, what happens if we were to like designate a a pond like this that is not clear whether the water would be reliable? Like what happens once it becomes designated as a fire suppression pond? Like, what is that, what is the consequence of dedicating pond water that isn't reliable to fire suppression?
There is no consequence to it, I'll I'll start by saying, just first of all, before the fire suppression pond legislation came through, it has never been denied if somebody needed to dip out of any body of water, right? We have quantified it for the records and we may in some cases say, hey, of those two ponds, that one's fully augmented water at a thousand dollars a acre foot. This one is just in priority water and nobody's gonna care, you might want to take it from that one, you might have to repay it from this one. That's the greatest extent that our office has ever lobbied into an emergency, right? It's an emergency, it's fire protection, we do what we need to do, everybody's familiar with that. So nobody would say, like last year, or was it last year, it's been two years, it's been interlock and I can't even remember. Uh, nobody would say, don't dip out of Twin Lakes, that's somebody else's water, you have a fire, obviously, just dip out of Twin Lakes, that's how it, that's how it's been handled. So any pond, I've never seen anybody complain about taking water from any pond. With that said, if you do designate this one, that's entirely your perspective, you can do that. It's gonna reduce, you know, your total thirty acre surface acres of available ponds you could designate anywhere else in the county. And you may in fact, you know, end up designating a portion of it that then you can't reliably fill, that's the only risk. But there's no problem with it, if you choose to do it, you choose to do it. From our perspective, all it does is say, we can't send a breach order to it for the next twenty years, it's spared any administration. Which, operating as a beaver pond, right, I'm inclined to say, let it be, because except for the fact that it has a diversion, which is maybe something, but again, those are the kind of things I think we would have otherwise negotiated through this water court process that's currently going on, I don't know that we would have um interfered with that pond. I I can't, I I can't say that I would have been sending orders to breach it anyways, is my point. I may have had questions about if it's just going to be a beaver pond, why we have a diversion out of it, and that would be part of the conversation that we have further on. But if you choose to go forward with it, if it qualifies, which we've seen enough evidence, I think that it probably was there in nineteen seventy-two. Again, I have hesitation about the structure itself not being controllable. But that's technically not in the legislation, I don't think anybody thought about that issue at the time. It's been, as you guys may be aware, the beaver conversation has been on a high level point of contention all the way up to the state.
It has been, I have been astounded at how many hours of beaver conversation I've sat through.
Yeah. It's crazy.
I really did not understand, it is way beyond wolves in this.
Oh, is it beaver and wolf?
Beaver trumps wolf every day, apparently.
It's a very, it's a very interesting topic, I agree, but the but but no, if you if you choose to designate it, you can designate it, but if you can't fill it, you might not be able to fill it. And that may just be because of the source of supply being in conflict over drops of water.
Does, oh, does designation help leverage protection and preservation of the pond itself as far as water supply?
According to the the document on that, it says that it automatically assumes senior water rights.
That's.
Well, that's the way the application reads.
I don't think that, that.
Yeah, I think, I, Larry, I don't think it says that, um, it doesn't take the place, but Bill Tyner is on the line and he has done a lot of work in this area on Barrier Creek and everything, and he took himself off mute, so I'm hoping that means he will speak. He is the person that formerly had the job that Rachel currently has and also has been representing um the Friends of Barrier Creek on getting the substitute water supply plan, et cetera. So he might be, have some useful input too.
We can barely hear you, Bill, is there any way that you can uh speak closer to the microphone or turn yourself up a little?
Uh, let's see, is that better?
That's a little better.
Okay. Um, just a a couple of clarifications for Rachel, um.
I can't hear that.
We we're, we are, we are still having a little trouble hearing you, Bill.
Okay, hang on just a second, I'm gonna jump off and jump back on on the other computer, I'll be right back on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have more questions.
Yeah.
Um, I would love to hear from our um like our water staff.
Yeah, I think, I think it'd be good because in context for you guys too, because um as Rachel said, um it's not necessarily that we're advocating for a pond or against the pond, so necessarily opposition to this pond and it's really up to the county's decision to include or not the consequence, um as Rachel mentioned, was that it's gonna cut into your allowable thirty acres that you can use to designate within the county. What, I mean, Rachel went through a lot of uh different court cases and the process that she's working through and their and their um opinions on whether this pond is appropriately uh basically constructed for a fire designation. And I think the important thing for the county is you, we're working through the water enterprise and how that is going to provide, you know, really like the best use of the water resources assets that you have to yourself. And we work with the Division of Water Resources, me and Sky, um, in a number of different divisions in Colorado. And what we always have to do is work through that process with DWR and the water court cases, and we need to let those play out, you know, for better or for worse. And right now, these processes are playing out for different water court cases and I think Rachel's interpretation of of this pond. We need to let those play out, number one, rather than interfere with those. And, I mean, I I think the fire designation alone won't necessarily open yourself, open Lake County up to a lawsuit or litigation, but interfering with the water court case is a different matter. And I think while we don't know what the outcome of this is gonna be, whether the natural flow would even provide water to these ponds, number one, or the construction of the ponds is gonna meet the requirements of what the Division of Water Resources wants. But Lake County, I think, is in a a position to focus on the water enterprise and interfering with the sort of these water court cases. It's going to play out, and then at that time, we'll understand what the position is, and it'll be honestly easier to consider for the county um about whether uh is it's, it fits within your plans.
Just just designating a water supre- a fire suppression pond, does it act as an opposition in a court case? Or how does it actually affect a court case or?
It exempts it from the water court world, from the water administration world. It just says, we're exempt, don't bot- don't touch me, you can't administer me, I'm special.
Exempt.
Okay.
Sorry, and Bill's back on, I don't need to.
No, it's okay, let's, we're gonna finish this. How does it, what is the consequent, how does it understand the consequence of interfering then in a in a water case?
Well, so if there's these water court cases, they're deciding what the natural flow path is for water in this area. Designating this pond as a fire suppression, so therefore removing it from administration. If the pond have, and this is where, we don't know how the court is gonna turn out, but say there's some sort of water that is required to be sent to the pond for whatever reason, then, and if I'm understanding designation right, the pond can't actually have a water right associated with it specifically. We don't know the outcome of these court cases, court cases could be, there's a lot of negotiation that that goes on throughout them, there are multiple years that it takes to to uncover this, and we don't know what the outcome's gonna be. And so if there's a water right associated with it in the future, then it kind of can't be designated a fire suppression pond. And that is something that, then it opens to potential for litigation, further litigation.
I wonder, because I know it it, it's a little nuanced, because it can't have a out of pond water right, like irrigation. It can't have an in situ one, like wildlife habitat or.
Yeah, non-consumptive.
Non-consumptive, right? And fire suppression, I think, is probably the out of pond, thinking about it, so just for clarification there.
Okay, is downstream that upstream?
What?
Downstream effects, not, not as much upstream effects.
Well, I think part of what is really still at question here is I wrote a report that's saying that the the sh- the source of water that fills this pond is filled through and through a ditch. I did an investigation, I wrote a report, that was my determination is that, you know, it it was a ditch. And so I think in in maybe some of the parties' eyes, that's still in question, and I'm not sure if that was what Bill was um chiming in to provide some you you were saying something to the effect of from for something maybe I missed or forgot.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Yeah, I I just wanted to clarify a couple of things with you, Rachel. The uh, the folks there in Twin Lakes, uh, you know, I think one thing that you would say is that they were a little caught off guard and surprised by some actions that um got taken by Angel View and then that you had to take last year and are still trying to be able to recover from that and be organized and uh exercise their opportunity through water court to obtain the legal water rights for um being able to have water flow down through Barn Pond and properly augment Barn Pond. And that includes having water properly flow through Markham Pond. So I I think it's, you know, Lake County's not under um an obligation to make a hasty approval or disapproval of a fire suppression pond. They are better served by taking time to make a good decision based on how effective that pond could be for the needs of the local community. And so I I guess a question I have for you is, do you agree that um the folks there in Twin Lakes ought to have the opportunity to get their water right situation straightened out? And that could include working with Lake County to be included in their plan for augmentation, for example. And that that uh effort to try to uh take care of that shouldn't preclude them from being considered for a fire suppression pond? If anything, I would hate to see Lake County discount this as um a possible source, because I think the location is so important. And I think all of your concerns can be remedied through that process. Is there anything that you think can't ultimately be fixed by those in there in Twin Lakes that want to have this as a pond for fire suppression?
Is that a question to me or to the board?
Who's do you?
I I don't think, oh, sorry.
That's a question to you.
I think that it can be included in the ongoing negotiations and should be. I think that um it's better to declare what you want to do and make it right, whether that's through an exemption by fire suppression or or not, and it it kind of feels like it, the this is not directed at this pond specifically, but in a lot of cases, our experience has been that the fire suppression request comes only after we've already started to try and administer a pond, right? Like people have um this knee jerk reaction that it's like, oh, you want to drain my illegal pond? I'm a fire suppression pond, and so that's the, that's the perspective that we have to come with from a lot of, a lot of places. Like I said, I I agree fully that this is a good location, you've got a lot of structures, you have a lot of good reasons for why this would be a good choice. But under the direct, like, just exempt it so we never have to talk to you again, I don't know if that's the best plan for this particular structure because of the unreliability of the supply and because of the inability to control the the amount of water. Right now, you don't know how much water you could store in there or if you can even reliably store it in there, because right now that downstream dam is subject to nature, right? It's not a, not a control structure. So if the location becomes the ideal point for the town's fire suppression hub, that's great. But let's talk about what it would take to make it reliable. Should it be part of the Barrier Ditch, um, sorry, it's, it's gonna be, it's a, it's a Freudian slip. The Barrier Creek um diversion, and you incorporate that into a future water court case, do you also look at the fact that there may or may not be some unregistered wells on that property that could potentially be a part of that? If there was, you know, a dry season and you needed to top it off, those kinds of things, I think that that's a great idea. I am all for fire protection, I just want to do it in a, you know, clear, transparent and and defensible way that's gonna give you what you need, because the last thing you want to do is go through this entire exercise and then show up to pull water from the pond and it not be there. So that's, that's my concern.
And I think to add on to that, and I think it's just important that the county just got a comprehensive look at why fire suppression is most utilized, best utilized. And so there's, there's these processes that are gonna play out, which gives you time to then look at. I mean, like everybody's saying, this is, this is a good location, there are other good locations too. We just need to look at it holistically so that we make sure that we're, it fits, you know? And there's, there's time for the county, you know, there, we have the benefit of time because of all these processes that are playing out. It's just, there's, right, it it's not, again, we're not by opponents to this at all, like it's gone.
And I'm not an opponent to you either, and just to be clear, like I said, I look at it from the lens of, oh, we've already started a conversation with a pond, they don't want to be enforced upon, and so they're claiming fire suppression. Okay, fine, that sets in motion a one-year period where I'm instructed not to continue enforcement actions, ordering them to breach or requiring them to to replace or whatever, for one year, gives them a little bit of opportunity. I'm not in any rush on this pond, you've got a lot of things going on with a lot of things in Lake County. And I don't, I have, I have to prioritize my time and my staff's time as well, and we've got other areas of focus that we're looking at as far as administration and enforcement goes. This is not on the list, so you have lots of time. Any progress towards resolution is progress, right? I'm not gonna come back and be like, nope, if you don't have this resolved immediately, breach it, we're not there.
Um, what is the like minimally invasive or destructive, or like the lowest bar for um putting a barrier at the bottom of a pond just to make it more reliable? Like, is this look, like, I'm just trying to visualize, like, what needs to be done to make this pond more appealing, yeah?
Fire control.
Yeah.
I mean, like I said, right now, it's it's quote unquote a beaver pond, it is mostly constructed of sticks and mud and and the like. I think there's some tarps and other things in it.
Needs some earth.
It needs some earth, yeah. Um, generally, the type of structure that you would see in like a livestock water tank or an erosion control dam, those are constructed dams, they're like less than fifteen feet tall because they're not jurisdictional, um, ten feet tall, ten feet tall. But the the livestock water tanks are fifteen, but that's besides, you would want to, you would want a earthen dam of less, like nine point nine feet tall, and you would probably want to put in some sort of um outlet works so that you could control. Like, for example, this pond is, well, like it or not, it is in the pathway to the barn pond. So the wrong situation with the Markham Pond could dewater the barn pond, and not being able to control how much flow you're bypassing, uh, it's a system. So it's just questionable to me to to put that much weight on a a beaver dam, right? You want to be able to say, okay, well, we're gonna divert one CFS down that creek towards the Markham Pond, and we're gonna let a quarter out to keep the barn pond full while we're filling that pond back up after a fire incident, or or those kinds of things. incident, or or those kinds of things. All requires some sort of physical low level operational outlet works. And those can be as complicated as you want, or more as simple as like an agri-drain, they're just structures that go in the earth and then you pull a board when you want to set the height of the water in the pond or store it back up, those kinds of things, they're pretty minimal.
When when you say nine point nine feet tall.
Then you don't have to deal with the damn safety wrench because you're exempt from public health and safety.
It's a non jurisdictional.
Is is that from the surface of the water or the lowest point on the backside?
It's the low point of the drainage to the crest of the dam, or the spillway if there's.
Okay. That sounds like a pretty big, big mountain dam.
I don't think it's, I've been in there, I don't think.
It's, this is like not even five feet tall, probably.
Yeah.
Beaver, the beaver dam up there is only like three or four, yeah.
Yeah, it's not.
It's not, it's not that much storage right now, which is another honestly concern for me, I guess, from a fire protection ponds situation is like, how many draws to the pond do you get if it's this small?
Yeah.
This kind of a question.
Right, so yeah, you said we had thirty acres total. Uh, I was wondering, that's not acre feet, that's surface area. And then um, how big is the Markham Pond? Do we have a number?
Not on my head, but I can get the number.
It changes or?
I know the max size can be six acres for any individual pond, but I don't have off the top of my head, it's tiny.
It's got a quarter acre.
Yeah, it's right in max.
It's it's less than an acre. That's surface area.
An acre, probably less than half an acre.
Yeah, it's less than half.
I mean, I do, can you tell us a little bit more about the process of what, how does the county, how have counties gone about establishing their thirty acres? Because I, all I remember is that Jefferson has done this. But um, like, for us to understand how we can be working with Chief Dan to actually establish our thirty acres. I'd love to know a little bit more about that process, because then also, I'd love to understand, like, once you establish, when something does get approved by the state, what changeability is there? Like, how set in stone is it once you've established?
We haven't approved any, we haven't finalized any yet.
Oh, none have been approved, sorry, I'm I'm misunderstood.
Not not in our vision, we'll we'll try our best to answer those questions, but the long story short is that this is still a in progress.
Okay.
Yeah, it's an evolving process. Uh, one thing that I think is helpful to the process that maybe wasn't apparent at the beginning um, that the state engineer has agreed is that you don't have to come to us with a, these are the thirty ponds we're gonna include.
Right.
All at once, it can be piecemeal, and we can do them one at a time.
Okay.
As you do that evaluation, um. Once it's designated, it's designated for twenty years. And it takes up that space in your in your allocation allotment. Um, I've been talking to Bryce, because as we've been working through this, you know, we're lessons learned, right? We've we've come to the realization that you guys have a whole set of things that are outside of our world that you need to consider for where you would want to pond, mostly the fire things, right?
Right.
Where are you um, at your biggest disadvantage, where don't you have other water supplies?
Right.
Um, where can you physically access it? Those are outside of our our world. We look at it from the other side of, does it meet all these criteria, can it get water? Like that kind of stuff, and we we kind of have that lens. What we've recently done was a pilot project in Custer County where we, instead of doing one-off enforcement actions on individual ponds, we said, we're gonna take a step back. We're just gonna look at this whole county as one county, we're gonna just inventory everything first. And so we spent the last two years doing a special project trying to take care of that, and out of that, we're producing a report, and of that report, there's a subset of hey, county, these ponds are all eligible from the water perspective for fire suppression ponds, maybe you want to use that as a basis for looking at your
Hmm.
decisions for access and all the other things. Um, I think there's more merit maybe to that approach because it's really hard for you guys to look at a pond when somebody comes, because again, a lot of times they're coming into stress as a way to avoid enforcement, and and I think that um, that kind of maybe can blur your goals with respect to that. And again, if there's a fire and there's a pond, whether it's designated fire suppression pond or not, we're not gonna say, no, don't use that.
Right.
You've got a fire, it's an emergency, handle it, that's fine. So, I just want to be clear on those points.
Yeah, yeah, we heard.
That's that's.
Um, just to follow up, because this is important to me, are there specific counties that you would suggest we look to who have designated some fire? You're saying that?
The only ones that have done the process so far is Werfenau.
Werfenau.
Werfenau has started and
Custer.
Custer has started.
Oh. Why do I think?
And so we have a process and we put together a pamphlet. They might be just not a division.
Oh, got it, got it, okay.
Yeah, that's true.
Sorry.
Sorry, in division two.
Yeah, in division two, because I don't know about the state. Like a hundred percent sure.
But we put together a pamphlet, or I guess a working doc that just basically says, first, you need to you know, select your pond, then you need to notice us, and you need to send the notice to the SWSP notification list, and you have to fill out this form. So we've been trying to like put it in a package for the counties to make the process a little bit easier. Um, but I think your point, right, between now and when this gets designated, if there's a fire, nobody's gonna say stop.
No.
Yeah, yeah.
Like you have time.
And also, that's kind of the the outcome of like, once you do that, because you're looking for like, how how do you get a framework or whatever for a plan? You know, how, what do we need to do? And, you know, there's, there's a lot of very large water providers that rely on water in in Lake County.
Right.
And talking with them, um, they've done wildfire ready action plans that have identified a lot of problem areas already that we just it would, it would really benefit the county to make sure that those are adequately considered.
Yeah.
If you're gonna do this comprehensive look, because wow, this pond is great and protects this district. There are a lot of other spots in the county that need to be protected for a lot of different reasons.
Oh, yeah.
And we just need to make sure that we're talking to everybody to that, and like, you you get a comprehensive look.
And I don't, sorry, go ahead.
I might just piggyback off of that with uh, one detail, which is, and Rachel, please ground truth me. This is something from previous work in El Paso County, but I believe their commissioners were also working closely with Office of Emergency Management, with fire departments to really dial in on what requirements would be necessary for any hydrant fixtures, access roads, right? Like having a code and clear expectations developed
Hmm.
around, you know, access for hydrants, um, you know, specific uh, geometry and depth and access for helicopters, if that's right, so having engineering and parameters in mind for how that water is actually accessed as well.
I just want to say, I know there are people that apparently, I didn't know if they hear.
Well, yeah, we were.
I don't like making errors.
Bailey was next in line after the front row, so I wanted to give him his his.
I just wanna, I just want to say, Dan, before you speak, I absolutely hear the Markham Pond request. Absolutely heard from Lake County, and as a county commissioner, I want to understand how that would fit within our full county's designation and understanding the entire context, so that as we move forward with this, whether it's piecemeal we just start with Markham Pond and then go to the rest, or if we go to the whole thing. I just want to understand the bigger picture, so I understand that Lake County has, or that Twin Lakes has requested this. And uh, I feel like it's just really important to be educated in the whole process, that's why I'm asking lots of questions. So I don't mean for it to be, I'm deflect, I'm not deflecting from the Markham Pond, I'm trying to understand the whole. Okay, thank you.
Chief Bailey?
Yes, uh, that was great information to your, for sure. I want to talk about the public safety aspect. So, our main station is in downtown, for those who don't know, and we did open an additional station, but it's not operational currently right now for emergency response, so our, our response time to Twin Lakes is anywhere from twenty-five to forty-five, depending on where we're at in the county at the time for fire, any wildland or structural. So, uh, fire dunnels and size every thirty seconds in a structured fire because of the conditions today. Most of the um, structured fires that we have in the Southern Lake County area, unfortunately, all at a lower capacity than ones that are closer, right, in the sense. We've had fully evolved structures down there, and we have some in, there was a seafaring show this last year. So, any kind of water source for us is is um, very, very beneficial. Currently, right now, our our only water source for Twin Lakes serves that area is the power plant.
Hmm.
That is a ten to fifteen minute drive, and then connection, and then et cetera, et cetera, right? So, if we arrive in sea, on scene in Twin Lakes, and we're we're able to have a water source where we can fill a thousand gallons of water in six minutes, if it's available, because there's already a dry hydrant there.
Hmm.
Then that is huge for us, because if it's a fully evolved structured fire, we're using twelve hundred and fifty gallons per minute. So, we have a thousand gallons and I'm ready, right, we just did a quick math. So, and if it's a, and if we're using hand lines, we're using a hundred and seventy-five gallons per minute. Uh, if it's anything like a room contents or a little bigger, any kind of structure, that gives us four and a half minutes on a tank. We have a a four person engine company, and we don't, you know, the mutual aid or your greater assistance for our engine company, there's a huge delay behind us most of the time. Now, we can split the crew and bring a three thousand gallon tender with us and also get, you know, other works involved, et cetera. But um, having that water source, um, being able to get into Twin Lakes and hook up to something of, I don't care if it's a beaver pond, I don't care if it's a, I don't care if it's Twin Lakes, right? Is is imperative for us to be able to give us a fighting chance, so that, think about this scenario in June on a red flag day, and a fire starts.
Hmm.
If it starts in one structure, and we can't get ahead of it, and it continues to spread throughout Twin Lakes, Twin Lakes is gone. So, anything that we can do is gonna be beneficial. Another, another point is ISO, uh, the insurance ratings. Um, any kind of water source that any residential area can have can be beneficial for their insurance. Uh, currently, right now, Twin Lakes sits just outside that five miles, but as expansion happens a- a- as we designate water sources specific to firefighting, and then we already have that established. And then we have the response capability to station two, or we end up um, because of the growth that's happening down in the southern of Lake County, right? It's more, there's more permits pulled, from what I understand, from the building department in Southern Lake County than any other area in in Lake County, so it's growing.
Hmm.
Same, designate something within that five miles. Well, now we already have a designated water source which helps insurance ratings also for the general public. Um, that, um. We have, we have uh, dry hydrants in Beaver Lakes, Mount uh, Moose Haven, Moose Haven is just a little pond right out front. But it has a a dry hydrant system that we come up to. Uh, the power plant I mentioned, we have Panarc, I work with Panarc, to put a hydrant system in there, so there's physical hydrants on their um, on their um, pressure that they have, uh, from the tanks that they have in Panarc. Uh, Mount Massive Lakes, Home State Trout Club, Silver Hills, goes on and on. The majority of the areas in Lake County all have dry hydrants of some kind. Some kind of designated use for the fire department to be able to get in there and understand where they're at, and be able to utilize that water. Twin Lakes does not have it.
Hmm.
So, um, I don't know what the future of this holds, and it seems like we may have some uh, obviously some further discussion and and uh, some work to be done here, but I I am very, very much so in favor of making sure that we do have that water source in that location. And I don't know how we go about it, or whether it's the water's gonna be there when we show up because of what was discussed here on the actual flows and all that, but um, if it's there, we can use it.
Yeah.
So.
The location is just, it's something I will, with.
Nope.
When you're just, what you're describing is like, it's not minutes, it's seconds count down there.
Absolutely, especially in the wildland fire too as well, right?
Yeah.
Surrounded by forest, I mean, another point, right, uh, there is no, there's no other water source going up high way to here, that we can tap into. So we're, our hands are tied, we're bringing our water with us unless we can't tap into something.
Dan, if you could, so you're in a dream world, but, okay, love it for us. And Twin Lakes, all those structures exist down there, and all of the water sources exist. Forget that there are like dry hydrants anywhere, where would you ideally have a water source? Where would you ideally be pulling from, where would you ideally have placed a dry hydrant if it was only up to you?
In the Twin Lakes area?
Yeah.
Well, the more unlimited source, of course, would be in the Twin Lakes, the two, you know, Twin Lakes.
Right. Yeah.
But uh, you know, that's that's a whole nother angle.
Totally, I'm just curious, I'm really just curious, because a lot of this has to do with like, where the infrastructure is that we can work with. And I just think it's, it's a valuable thing to be like, well, where, where is the ideal sometimes?
Um, we just did that tour, and a pressurized line off the storage tanks from Four Bay
Totally.
coming into town with a pressurized hydrant rating down would be phenomenal.
Amazing.
This is, this is right, it's on the right track, it's good.
Yeah.
May I?
Yeah, go ahead. Hi, sorry.
Hey, Colleen, uh, in the last two years, we have had, as you know, fires that spread like wildfire.
Wildfire.
And uh, we have had more dispersed camping, we have had more unattended uh, fire pits. And it is, it is every year, the volume just gets higher. And what it would take to, you know, get water from Twin Lakes through, okay, now, who do we get that from and how do we structure it? That's three years, right?
Yeah.
I don't have three years. Just saying.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, let's go back to hands raised up here, we got Kelly with her hand raised on line.
Thank you, um, I just, I just wanted to note that Larry submitted an application and all the information to the commissioners back in January of twenty twenty-three. And much as Rachel had noted that people took action when they knew that a pond was going to be cut. It was after that that Angel View cut off the flow, it was after that that the Colorado Division of Water Resources issued their report and sanctioned the cutoff of the flow that filled that pond, and I think it might be interesting to ask Larry, who's had that property for many, many years. How many times over those many years, his his beaver pond has gone dry? Just to folk, to scope out the.
I've been there thirty years, and the only time it went dry was when Angel View got it out.
This only happened once in the thirty years that you've owned the property?
Yeah, and that was when Angel View worked it off.
I mean, that sounds like a trip, isn't it?
I would just add to that, that that's probably true, but it was also being completely unadministered. Now it is being administered, those are not lawful diversions, now they will be lawful diversions. And the future means that by the water court side of things, the ability to turn off the supply to that pond at least once a month through the entire summer is there going forward. We went through it all this summer, we've been back and forth dozens of times, and I'm just saying keep that in mind when you're looking at past practices versus future practices, that was not on our radar, it was not being administered, it was not a lawful diversion. Now it will be.
And by, you were saying that was like ninety-five years ago that that got put in the thirties or something, that that?
I think the first, I think the, there's, this is how much, when we talk about, give me the word again.
Modification.
Modification. The first modification in that reach that we've been able to identify is that they brought water from Corski Creek into Bartlett Gulch.
Right.
And then lower, they brought water from what was now being called West Bartlett Gulch into East Bartlett Gulch. We worked through a water court case on that one, now we're working on the last water court, I hope, last water court case that is going to determine the third trans basin is what I would call them, diversions, that takes water out of the natural drainage way runs it along the contours like a ditch, as a ditch, and puts it into a different drainage basin. So all three of those were not lawful diversions as far as any evidence that we can find, and so those are all they're ditches to to take water wherever it was that needed to go, not down the natural channel. So this last one is the, we've been working on this since twenty sixteen, we've got, like I said, the the top two of them managed, we're in the process for managing this last one. And those um, those will be being administered in the future. The current status of the drainage, where the water comes off of the main drain into the tru- the the ditch that takes the water to Markham Pond now has a head gate and a measuring flume and a lockable controllable device that says whether or not water comes or doesn't come down that. Whereas before, it was uncontrolled flow, which was causing a lot of flooding issues for the county roads, for the people in that area, because it's not it was an, it was a ditch that had no control, so it would flow down that direction and go and then overrun the banks because there wasn't enough capacity in that ditch to handle the natural drainage, so now the natural drainage goes down the main drag and the part that is allowed under the S. So now the natural drainage goes down the main drag and the part that is allowed under the SWSP is peeled off and sent over by Akins and then down into Markham Pond and then down into the Barn Pond.
Is part of the end game gonna be restoring that area to pre-modifications? And could that have detrimental effects to the Barn Pond, the Markham Pond, that whole area? Is that sort of what?
That's ultimately what happened last year. And so now the resolution for Barn Pond is this pathway forward that designates a certain supply for the Barn Pond that Markham Pond is benefiting from by virtue of being in the pathway.
Yeah.
So are you, it's my understanding that there are all these court cases dealing with this flow. And if we does, if, when we designate this a fire suppression pond, it could get in the way because then it won't be, it might not be secured water. And if we say some, if we, if we've designated a fire suppression pond, then it'll push that out a year as to whether we would know it would be secure or not?
I think the important thing to keep in mind is that you guys could control this. Let's say hypothetically, you designated as a fire suppression pond. And by the, let's say all of the negotiations amongst the neighbors in that area fail. And they say, that's it, we're going to administer directly and specifically by the decree. For three weeks out of this month, we're going to shut that supply off completely. This is, this whole world is augmented, right? And what, it's all Disneyland, is what I'm trying to say. It looks like a pretty natural waterfall, but it's not. It's all because somebody's moving water somewhere. You guys have the potential from your own O G plan, if you were to go that far, you could use your own water to fill that pond and restore the height of it. I would still, if I was in your shoes, want to do it to a pond that I knew I wasn't going to just leak it out, the leaky beaver dam at the bottom. But again, that's the kind of stuff you guys can consider. You know, you have the ability to use your own augmentation water to put it in that pond. Maybe you go and, and look at improving that dam. I'm not disagreeing in any way that fire protection is super important, the location could be great. I think it, I don't know your, your issues with the fire pieces. I've seen lots of the areas where I feel like it makes reasonable sense to back a truck up and try and suck water out of there. I've seen other ones where if it's an eighteen inch deep, deep muddy beaver pond, I don't know that it's going to work that great from the, from the stingers in, you call it dry hydrant, but these are not like, um, really great tech for what's pulling the water out. You could have a lot of mud and mo- and moss type issues getting sucked into your tank and then end up, you know, if you don't have the right infrastructure is all I'm trying to say. It might be worth talking on, on a bigger scale about improving that structure so that, you know, you don't have to back into their yard, which currently has a fence around it to get to the dry hydrant. You could just pull up to the, to the county road that's right at the bottom of that, have a discharge pipe out of the reservoir and then take cleaner water because you're not sucking off the bottom. Those kinds of things I think are worth considering. But all of it can be designed and planned for and is what you pay these guys for to get you to that point, you know? So you could work around it if you, if you participate in that negotiations and discussion that Tyner and Angel View and all of those guys are having as to how are we going to split the baby on the flow of the water, if you will? You can participate in that and then build into that plan ways in which to overcome shortfalls if the decrees are all going by priority.
Can we let, uh, John online?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Hello, thank you, yeah. Um, first of all, I have no doubt, and I'm holding up a map that Rachel actually also got, you can't see it. It's an eighteen seventy-nine USGS topo map that clearly shows Barrier Creek. I have no doubt that soon or later, unfortunately, probably later, Barrier Creek will be designated what it has been for over hundred fifty years. Okay, it beats the hell out of me that anybody can walk there and claim it's, it's a ditch, but leave that to the side. The main point is really time is of essence. You can already see walking into the water issue could take you years. You could designate this or submit the application today. Do you ever want to have a time to look back and say, wow, last year, they proposed this and now we had a fire? And we could have had that water, that would be horrible. Second point is, if you have water, think about what would be the first issue to do with your water? Sailboating? Golf courses? Or ensuring the safety of county residents? Wouldn't that be your main issue? Finally, that whole waterway, the natural creek, is itself a humongous defensible space surrounding Twin Lakes. Whether they are beaver ponds, wetlands, creeks, that is a huge defensible space that you don't have to build. And finally, people give the little beavers such a hard time, they are the best dam builders. You can Google the beaver dam analogs. People have a hard time replicating what the beavers do. You guys have tried to take beaver dams apart, they build them up in two hours. They are the best dam builders. So of course, they can be leaky, that was mostly from people. The beavers will outbuild you, okay? They might not build right away nine feet, but they will raise it, okay? And when, sure, Pittkin County actually releases beavers to do exactly that. You have also this other benefit of increasing groundwater, wetlands, tourist attraction. There is no other place I can think of where you can hit so many issues with this tiny designation. It's a fraction of your water. So I'm hoping you're not hesitating. You've heard from Rachel that they will not stand in the way. Of course, fire issue is important and rather sooner than later. I, I don't see, and, and, and I really appreciate what your fire chief is saying. Let's just go with what he said. Let's build this thing, let's use it, let's suck it when we need it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jan.
And then Bill is next.
Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, thanks. Just, um, I appreciate what Rachel mentioned about the fact that we are conducting meetings with Angel View. In fact, September twenty-third in Colorado Springs, we've got a meeting scheduled that, Rachel's satellite office there with, set that Colorado Parks and Wildlife Office off of Sinton Road. And would be glad to extend that invitation to some Lake County folks if they would like to. I, I, I would emphasize, I think all of the concerns that have been raised can be remedied. And it does take time to work through court processes. But, um, you know, I, I think e- e- even there are other things to work through as well. I, I don't think that Angel View has crossed the line completely as far as being able to get their special use permit done with the Forest Service. And so there are things that could happen that could, could impact how flows are managed. Ideally, folks will be able to cooperatively work together to do what's best for the entire area there. And so I, I'd encourage county commissioners just to, uh, take your time. Don't make a, a hasty decision against this being a fire suppression pond. But rather, you know, be able to work, um, to see if we can't make it one that works best for the needs of the county. And with respect to other counties that you might look at, I would just draw it to you. It looks like Jefferson County is pretty far along. You might want to look at their, their program and how they've gone about it. That might be helpful to the, the county commissioners.
Thank you, Bill.
Great, thank you, Bill. There's a lot of this that feels like we're in uncharted territory still. We just don't know so many things.
I mean, it feels to me like there, we have a short-term options and long-term options. And that making a decision quickly doesn't actually lock us into anything. It doesn't, it's not, this is just an intuition, this is not like a determination, I definitely need to sit on this and understand it better. But we have both short and long-term options and, and even though it's involving water rights, it's not as, it doesn't feel as dire to make these smaller choices to, to designate some ponds. Like it's not, I'm just saying, I think that we, I think that yes, we have time and we also have flexibility. And that's not always something I feel like we get to say when we're talking about water rights in this room. So I'm, I'm encouraged in that way from this, from this seat. I also feel like, um, there are a lot of people we can learn from as to how to do this right. And I would heavily let, rely on Chief Daly to go about this, both short-term and long-term options that we have. Because, because we, if we're going to designate a pond, Chief Daly, I want it to be a good pond that will not, that will be reliable in a state of need. And I hope that the Markham Pond can be that, but I would want more investigation and partnership to make sure that we're making those choices correctly in the short term. That would be my next step personally.
How small are the designations of our thirty acres allowed to be? Can it be tenths of an acre, is it half an acre, is it square feet?
There's no standard size limitation, just a max limitation.
So we can't designate Twin Lakes? This is our pond.
It already has water.
If, if we look at, you know what, on a dry season, smaller footprint of Markham Pond and designate, you know.
Because it can't be any greater than the size that existed as of June first nineteen seventy-two. That is a condition.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there currently water in the pond?
Yes.
Is there anything stopping you from using that dry hydrant in case of an emergency?
No.
No, no, we, um, we've actually tested it. We went down and filled up one of our rigs. The only thing that we need is two feet above and two feet, two feet below the actual pipe that goes inside of the water source by the screen on the end. Yes, there's Bell here, but, and we can't do more than a ten-foot rope.
So I got the map pulled up. There's two ponds, there's one that comes to the road and then there's a small channel that goes to an upper pond. Just to be clear, exactly what pond you're talking about.
It's the one by the road.
It's the one that terminates at the road and there must be a culvert.
Right.
That takes it underground.
Under the highway to the Barn Pond.
Just under the road. It flows on the surface down to the highway and then back under highway.
We have two people online with their answers. Do we mind if, I think Kelly had her hand raised first.
Go ahead, Kelly.
All right, this is Robert Crabill. Kelly and I are sharing right now. I, I think it's important to realize that Twin Lakes has zero water infrastructure in town. Everyone is on their private wells with their private system. There's no public water system in the village here. So this is, this is a unique opportunity. This is a relatively small pond. It, it meets the criteria of, of fire suppression pond, but it's not, it's not using up all your allocation here for fire suppression ponds. We talked about it being less than a half acre, uh, surface area. We're talking even smaller than that. It, it, it may be on the order of, of point one, point two acres in size. So it, it, it's not, it's not a big issue here. But we are not going to move ahead and spend money improving it if it doesn't have legs here. And so I, I think it's important to step back and remember, all we are asking is, is the verbal support from Lake County. We're not asking you to spend money on it at this time. We're working on the, the application, it just needs to be signed by Lake County. But what we need, we've got a team of experts here. What we need is just Lake County support on this. So yes, we have to work through some issues. We could certainly make physical improvements to the dam. I don't think that's u- unimaginable here. I, I think the community would come together and, and fund all that. So it, it's not that we're asking for funding or anything, we're just asking for your support to move ahead and address some of these issues that have been brought up here today. Thank you.
I, speaking for myself, I support the notion of this. I want to make sure that we are deliberate and we properly vet any unforeseen consequences, any, uh, problems that could arise that we didn't plan for ahead of time. And I, I want to make sure that if we choose to do this, we're doing it in the best way to avoid problems for the property owner, for the people of Twin Lakes. So I think, you know, I don't, I don't think anyone's against this. I think it's more of, we're just really trying to be thoughtful in how we're going through this process to make sure that we don't do anything wrong.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would, I, I hear the request from Twin Lakes. I appreciate all of the effort and the work and the passion and the urgency. And I'm, I'm trying to be deliberative in understanding the whole picture because government moves slowly and when we move really quickly, we make mistakes. I'm just trying to avoid mistakes. And of course, we're in a work session, so we're not going to make any decisions right now. But I would hope that you all can hear our sentiment and how much we deeply want this for you all and, and want to be partners in how we accomplish it.
Hey, in the back?
I'm not from here. I just moved here like today, veteran drone pilot.
Welcome.
I was already at your station, so, um, but what about like a geo-registration or camper's insurance? Where they do a minimum insurance for like the acre that they're on? And maybe have a drone pilot or a forester check to see if any open planes? And if they don't have the minimum camper's insurance, they get a ticket.
Is that something you value with Chief Daly?
And then the pipe, are the pipes metered? Can we like have someone go out and check on the level and flush them out and push them through? I don't know anything about your infrastructure, but. I mean, I go and check them out, so.
Nice. Chief Daly, you want to say anything about that? Does it sound interesting? No, okay.
No, I, I, but I'd like to be able to talk to you more on that.
Cool.
Yeah, I think the, the, that touches on the subject of the recreational use in the area that we're seeing. It's just skyrocketed. You have, you have been here for twenty-six years and it used to be, you know, you'd almost never bump into anybody out in camp spots. And now it's like, it's stacked all summer long, not a stop. Everybody wants to come up here and not everybody is the best at taking care of a campfire. Or even paying attention to fire bans or, you know, and it's, it's alarming.
So I'd like to just try and undo a quick summary here. If we're getting towards the end of the fire season, this isn't going to happen here in next week's meeting, but there's definitely, we want to make it happen soon. So can we keep the pond full? And that's a neighborly agreement. So can we keep it full and accessible with some kind of verbal agreement or something for the rest of the season and make a goal of trying to do something, you know, this winter? Because like Elsa said, if we jump into something and don't study all the consequences. So is there a way we could make designation light? Like let's keep it full, let's keep it accessible, but let's do our homework before we designate it and, and muck up the court cases.
I mean, I can answer that, I guess, in the, with respect to the fact that, uh, we've, we have currently given more deference and flexibility to this area than I would normally under any other circumstances. I understand that this is a very contentious place. Our operations typically would be if we have an issue or we go one way or the other, we go by the letter of the decree, we curtail the diversion, we're done. We're not doing that here. We're doing our very best to, you know, work our way through everybody, getting what they need. And that's a, it's an oddball situation because first of all, water rights typically are administered based on the senior calls, right? Of the, the river. The senior call has nothing to do with what's going on down here. It's downstream on the Arkansas, everybody should be turned off for, for that purpose. But what we have is competing O G plans, which is in a whole different land of, of water law question. So we're right now, while we're all trying to be good neighbors, us working with the Barrier Creek folks, working with the Angel View folks, working with Lake County, trying to be like, okay, what can we do to, you know, manage this while we're working through the details? So to answer your question, yes, we're already doing that. We have no plan to do it differently. The only thing that's thrown any real hiccups in that is when we go out and lock a head gate down, if somebody goes and changes that designation with a key they're not supposed to have, that doesn't fly very well. And so that, you know, is something that needs to not be occurring. But besides that, we're trying to work with people.
Bryce, are you participating in the conversations as Lake County with the, that Bill was, I think it was Bill who was speaking about it with Angel View?
We just talked about it yesterday and I haven't had a chance to ask you.
And I just learned about this meeting yesterday. I, I think at this time, I was waiting to see what they discussed first before we waited in. Um, I, I think at this time, I was waiting to see what they discussed first before we weighed in. You know, we're, we're the senior water rights holder in this area. These issues are going on downstream of us. We worked with the division a lot this summer to change some of our processes, to make it so that we're, um, getting the water we need without getting involved in that stuff downstream. I think this adds some new context to getting involved with what they're doing. However, I just really hesitate to, to wade into their litigation or arguments unless we have kind of like a strong position of this is what we'd like to see as our.
Which Bryce has been doing a good job all summer. I mean, like, Lake County's in a, in a strong position, you know, really with the help of D W R and, I mean, honestly, everybody else that's in the area. So, uh, Lake County's in the best position to start, you know, using their, uh, using their O G plan uh, for the enterprise. It's just now, like, like I said earlier, I think these issues just, they're getting it worked out. This is the summer that it's been like a trial period for a lot of people. Those issues are getting flushed out. I think to your point, as you said earlier, the pond could be used as fire suppression in dire circumstances as it is. Whether it's gonna have water or not, that's getting figured out. And that's where Bryce did a good job, you know, kind of operating above that, making sure that Lake County's protected while letting these issues kind of just play out this summer. It's a, it's a game pig here.
Well, can I, sorry, anything?
Are, are people's wells still running dry in Cleveland? You know, there was like issues of people's water.
I'd just like to say in closing that this is really important and it should be a priority for us and for our friends down in Twin Lakes. And, uh, so I, you know, let's, I personally think it should be a priority and maybe we limp through the rest of the year, do our homework and see how we can get it done.
And I'll say too, we're, we're heading into, like, you mentioned again, we're heading into no, low flow, uh, low fire season. And it's a good opportunity to, like you said, get out in front of it a little bit better. So we make sure that we're making the right decision. And I, and I will say too, um, they do, I think you kind of spoke to this also, but like, it is a relatively temporary, long-term. I mean, you guys are protecting the long-term interest of county residents. The fire designation, it lasts for twenty years. So looking at providing the confidence that, look, this winter, and then it's not a permit. You don't have to do it forever. It's just a twenty-year designation that, it's important now because tourism's picked up. There are some other spots that are more important now than they were earlier. Obviously, the fire chief has ideal spots that he'd like. Getting those pieces together and making a twenty-year selection isn't as onerous as a lifetime selection.
Those, Kelly says that those, Kelly and or Robert said that four wells went dry?
That's right. There were four, four wells that went dry in Gordon Acres after they stopped that flow that had gone to the Beaver Pond that's at the top of Gordon Acres.
Are those wells still dry?
Uh, three, three new wells were, were drilled. And I'm not sure if the fourth one drilled a well or not. A replace, yeah, we don't know what they have done. So.
Can I just ask for one more question? There are a zillion questions to be asked, right? But it's almost new. Bryce, when you are participating in these O G plans and kind of like representing the county, my understanding is that you're representing our water rights, right? What we're talking about, these conversations of like neighborly agreements, so is where I think I'm looking for a little more clarification about how, how we, the county is showing up. And that it's not us, actually our water rights that we're looking to protect. It's our community that we're looking to represent in these conversations. So maybe that's not a place where our water enterprise director would be showing up. But is that when we talk about, like Rachel, when you were saying that you could be participating as the county in these conversations with Angel View, is that something that we could be, like, who are we talking about? Could be representing and being in these conversations about neighborly agreements regarding this?
Yes, you was the county?
Yeah.
Um, again, because like Bryce mentioned, you, you really are like the, the senior water right holder and you have the ability to, um, when you're reviewing applicants for inclusion in your plan, you could use your water for some of these purposes. You could look at using, um, one of the issues with your current situation is that you have no good storage options for that water. Once it's quantified, right now, we're using it to offset instantaneous depletions in the river.
Mm-hmm.
On a one-for-one.
Mm-hmm.
Ideally, in your decree, your long, long-term goal should be to send that water down, quantify it, send it down, and then put it in storage so you can use it later for your needs. But your decree is, needs a little work on that front. I think that your participation through Bryce might be benefited by looking at these kinds of conversations through the lens of, um, hey, you have an illegal pond, the division engineer is on your case about breaching that dam. It's a good physical structure. Let's put our legal water in it.
Mm-hmm.
And then they get the benefit of getting to maintain that aesthetic benefit that they get to their property. But I don't have a problem now because it's got a legal source of water and you guys benefit because now you've got extra storage. That still has to be managed through an S W S P and then maybe an amendment to your decree, those kind of things. But that would be a good lens for the county with, you know, your defense first and foremost of your water rights. Because like I said, you don't want this, you have to be plugged into these kind of things enough to make sure that we're not gonna come up and be like, hey, you know, you were supposed to get this much credit, but that water never actually got there, so we can't give it to you. And now you don't have that resource for your replacement plans. Um, but, but that community conversation is where do we find these, um, win-win-wins for those kinds of things?
Mm-hmm.
And not just get passed by on the sidelines while other people are making arrangements around us, right? Is my thought. And Bryce does a great job of, of participating in those conversations. We touch base on a pretty regular basis to make sure that he knows what's kind of working, what's going on.
And I will say, yeah, I mean, in my position, I am laser focused on protecting Lake County's water rights that we own.
Right, yeah.
And developing them to the best way we can.
Yeah.
Um, so I will always have that bias, but when there's community, you know, other considerations that come in, we'll give our expert opinion. But obviously, this is, you are the owner of the water rights. You are the deciders of how we use them. And you have a lot larger consideration than me, right? So I will always be focused on that. Right? They, the entire county. Um, but that's where our water rights are.
Yeah.
This is, you know, an area where there is current and future litigation. So I want to make sure that we're being careful about not waiting in any litigation we can't or we don't want to be part of. But yeah, it's a complicated issue. That's why I rely on these folks and I'm always looking for other alternative solutions. But, um, the other thing I really just want to emphasize is that the two parties downstream of us have been kind of at odds, right? They've had some contention going on. And I've also been very intentional about staying out of, I don't want to take a position favoring one party or another. That's not my job. That is determinations that happen in a separate process. And so I have to take a little bit more objective and neutral position on that, which means that I can't wade into all these considerations as much as I want to, right? Like actual, you know, working with one party versus the other. That's why it's gonna be great for them to kind of have some more negotiations, propose some ways forward, and then we can see how we can tie into those rather than try to lead that process and, you know, show favor to one side or the other.
Any other questions?
Does anybody know if Angel View has a fi- a fire suppression system? Or what their plan would be for their home?
They have proposed a, I believe they have a fire cistern, two thousand gallon cistern that is part of Angel View One's plan. And do you remember that?
I do, yes. He talked to me about that and we're gonna, uh, that's, that's the plan, but also, uh, sprinkled structures.
Sprinkled structures?
Yeah.
So that every unit will have a giant cistern somewhere on the inside?
Well, it'll, 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 over a certain period of time, but. And he hasn't reached out to me in a while, but, uh, the initial was to have a cistern on drop. So it's not complicated at all. It's pretty simple.
That's what I've gathered.
Straightforward.
Um, I personally would ask for a follow-up work session so we can start, so we can let this ruminate, we can do our own inquiry and then actually start tasking action items in a separate work session.
Um, in regards to that, I would kind of be interested to see what, um, a prioritization list of subjects to take deeper dives in, I guess. You know, to sort of like, okay, we don't want to, uh, you know, step A, step B. It seems like it'd be real easy to go down rabbit holes that are sort of out of order in this.
Well, I think, I think we should each, uh, okay, so I think our s- next steps would then be to work with Sandra to get another work session. And then each of us come up with the topics we want to cover in that second work session, questions we have, et cetera, so that Sandra can then kind of co-late those and see who best be able to answer those next steps.
Yeah, I guess I, I need to pick the brains of the players.
Right.
Key players to find out what, you know, what we even need to, what this gets discussed first. Like whether it's the pending litigation, whether it's the water rights, whether it's the beavers, you know? It's multifaceted, there's so many different. In my head, I just keep envisioning just, you know, eight-inch wide cement barrier at the bottom of the pond that has a little gate on it that takes care of all the things, everything, you know? Not a nine, not a ten-foot tall dirt wall, but like it's just a little barrier that solves a lot of our question marks about the stability or the, you know, the consistency of the water supply there. But I don't even know how that, that works. If that looks, there's probably reasons why that wouldn't fly, I don't know. So I guess that's kind of my, I keep looking at like, well, how do we make the pond reliable? You know, like.
So that should be one of the things that you sent to Sandra. I like, I want to know how do we make the pond reliable? These are the things, these are the people that I've talked to. These are the.
And, and what is, what is the property owner so comfortable with?
Totally, yeah.
Want to say, oh, we're gonna build a giant dam on Larry's yard, you know?
Right. Yeah, we need all those for the next work session.
Yeah, but it, what I don't know, is that even worth talking about before we figure out things that I'm not even registering?
So Robert, are you still on? Mr. Crable?
Yes, I am, uh-huh. Go ahead.
Do you guys, do you guys have any kind, Robert's a water engineer. Do you have any kind of infrastructure design in mind or on paper?
Uh, no, we haven't drawn anything up yet. We haven't moved forward, but, you know, pending, uh, everyone's support of this here, we will start spending money and, and effort here to, to, um, make improvements. So we physically have a dam, we physically have water here today. Could it be a lot better and more resilient? Absolutely. So, yeah, we, we could rebuild the dam, we could build an outlet structure. Um, we have not begun to try to design that, but, uh, it, it's pretty straightforward and standard. We're not proposing anything out of the norm that we'd make improve, uh, improvements here, but yeah.
Well, I personally don't want to give the impression that you should start spending money on this also. We've made that mistake in this room. Um, so good to know and also please don't give us, give us a second, give us another work session before you spend any money or move in a direction. Does that seem fair?
Yeah. Cool. Uh, anyone else have any comments or questions in the room?
Yes, uh, just a tiny, uh, number, since I'm into math. If that pond is only a quarter of an acre, okay? And if it's four feet deep, seems very little. And you can only draw two feet out of that, okay? That would leave you a hundred fifty thousand gallons. Now, you just heard from Chief Daly that tender can handle three. So the tiny pond, you might walk up to it and say, what the, what the hell are you doing? Well, there are tens of thousands of gallons sitting. So a very little Beaver Dam, my point again, will save thousands. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much. Let's move forward as quickly as possible, is my hope.
Thank you, Jan. Anyone else in the room online? Oh, okay. Nothing else from the commissioners?
None for me, thanks.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, everyone. This has been illuminating and wow, a lot.
Super fun.
Yeah.
Thanks so much for all you guys are doing.
Thank you, everybody online. Thanks, Kelly. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, uh, it's twelve oh one. We will conclude this work session of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. Thank you, staff. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, everyone in the room.